Good morning and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, July 14. And as always, welcome to the traditional territory of the Squamish people. Before we get started this morning, I have a statement that I'd like to share. Council members attending the meeting electronically are required to advise the Chair of the meeting of the following circumstances. When the council member disconnects or reconnects, enters or exits the meeting, so that this can be recorded in the minutes of the meeting. Council members are to identify themselves when they advise the Chair that they wish to be placed on the speakers list. And with respect to a vote, council members are only required to state a nay vote. No statement is required if the member is in favor. Council members shall put their telephone or computer on mute unless they wish to speak. Council members shall be involved in and participate in the meeting. Council members shall text the chief administrative officer or the corporate officer if they have technical difficulty with their telephone or computer, as in they need to be reconnected to the meeting. And the meeting shall be recessed for up to 10 minutes if a technical difficulty occurs on the district side, which results in the council member being unable to be connected to the meeting. And with that, I also now need a motion on a staff recommendation regarding ministerial order M192. And the staff recommendation is that pursuant to ministerial order number M192, the District of Squamish is excluding in-person public attendance at this meeting on the basis that public attendance in a manner consistent with public health orders and recommendations cannot be accommodated at this time. And the district is ensuring openness, transparency, accessibility, and accountability at this meeting by the following means. The meeting is being livestreamed, and a video of this meeting will be available on the district's website for viewing on demand, on a on-demand basis. So I'm looking for a motion. Councillor Race is moving that, and a seconder, Councillor Penningill. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? And the motion carries unanimous. Next, we need an adoption of the agenda. The staff recommendation is that council adopt the July 14, 2020 Committee of the Whole Agenda. Moved by? Councillor Anderson is moving that, and it's seconded by Councillor Race. All those in favor? Opposed? None. That motion carries unanimous. So the next item on our agenda is staff reports. And we're going to get into the world of affordable housing, affordable housing organization framing discussion. And the general manager of community planning and infrastructure, Gary Buxton, is going to lead us off on this. Gary?
Good morning. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor and Council. So we've got most of the morning allotted for this discussion on the affordable housing organization. Now, Matt, I don't know if you want to queue up the PowerPoint presentation, and if we can pass the presenters. Well, for Matt, he'll coordinate the PowerPoint presentation. There's a number of us that are going to speak through the morning. As noted, this is sort of where the back half of the race on the affordable housing organization discussions. We want to advance that substantially today with council's input. We've done a significant amount of work previously to get us to some of which precedes this council, so we will be going back over some of that work very briefly. But first, I'd like to introduce the Macaulay Development Services team that are going to be with us, helping us get through this. Through RFP, we've contracted them to get us through the formation of the housing organization in whatever manner that takes place. So if you want to go to the next slide, we'll just do some quick introductions for the Macaulay team that's on the line today. Katie, I think it's over to you.
Yeah, hi, everyone. My name's Katie Fabris. I'm here today with you from Pender Island, on the traditional territory of the Quechua people. And I'm very excited to be with you to talk about this. With me on the line today have Lindsey Monk, Matt Notley, and Sandy Mackie, who will all be presenting a portion of this presentation today.
Thank you. Thank you, Katie. So that's the team that will be helping us today. So if we want to the next slide then. So the objectives today are threefold. We've got a backgrounder and a refresher to get everyone up to speed on past actions and decisions that we've made to get us to this point. I quickly want to review the current program and documentation in terms of what we're up to now, and that should be done relatively quickly in the first part of the meeting. We'll then move on to the, what we call the bracketing, or the discussion around the organization, the entity, the corporation, that's going to frame how we go from here in the formation of the organization and the follow-up conversations, how those take place with our nonprofit partners in the community. So those are the three objectives. The outline, the agenda and the outline is, we've got a brief introduction. We can get through that certainly in less than 25 minutes. And we'll get into the background and review the current documentation program in the first part, and then we can take a break. If we get through that quickly, maybe we can delay that a little. And then we leave the vast majority of the session this morning to that bracketing conversation, at the end of which we will attempt to provide a summary of what we've heard, allow for some final comments, and then provide the next steps and close, hopefully on time before noon. So, Katie, I think this is...
Thanks, Gary. Okay. So we thought we'd give you a little bit of an overview on sort of the current scope, as well as the background of all of the work that's been done to date. So the current scope of what's happening involves overall goals, as well as some interim deliverables, as well as the final deliverables. So the overall project goals are to establish the purpose and direction for a Squamish housing organization that will assist. Our goal is to assist with formalizing the coordination with the existing nonprofit sector in the community, while achieving the district's goal to develop a housing organization for the District of Squamish. So within this scope, we'll be working through a council directions report, which will come out of this discussion today, as well as a nonprofit table report, which the discussion today will inform the brackets, or the bounds of that discussion that we have with the nonprofit sector, and will report back to council on that discussion. The final deliverable of the scope will of course be that housing organization and those foundational documents, so the terms of reference, the bylaws, or the governance structure, or whoever that structure ends up taking place. So we're currently sort of in this first phase of this scope of the project, where we're seeking council direction. And as I mentioned, the next phase will be taking the bounds of this conversation, bringing them to the nonprofit sector and the community, and sort of ensuring that everything fits together and engaging that active nonprofit sector before launching an organizational framework for the district. So a little background about how the affordable housing conversation has happened in the district over the past many years. So we thought we'd bring it back to 2016, when council, Squamish Nation, the nonprofit sector, and the private sector together developed 12 recommendations through the Housing Task Board around affordable housing in Squamish. So through those recommendations, a number of them led to what would become the Squamish Affordable Housing Program. It identified that there was a need to coordinate and implement across the nonprofit sector, the private sector, and the district to really advance affordable housing goals in the community. So in 2018, Macaulay Development Services responded to NRTI and assisted the district in developing this affordable housing program. So we provided some initial direction and foundational policy for this affordable housing program. We assisted in laying the framework for two policies, so one of which with a comprehensive affordable housing policy, which that policy ends up bringing together how these affordable units come to the district, and then a perpetually affordable housing policy, which ensures that those units are affordable in perpetuity. That affordable housing framework also recommended further exploration into a Squamish housing organization, which you'll see throughout this presentation is often referred to as SHL. So in 2018, Macaulay Development Services again listed an affordable housing strategy and action plan. So from this, a housing need and demand analysis was done, and so there's data throughout this presentation that's referenced from that need and demand analysis. So we wanted to make sure that the decisions and the information that you were discussing today was rooted in that data and the gaps that exist in your community. We also built out a bit of a toolkit around comprehensive affordability. So we're looking at the tools that the district can employ in order to move forward with bringing units online. And then we looked at the development of a policy for perpetually affordable housing. There were also a Squamish housing organization evaluating houses of four different models for what an organization could look like. So from these four different models, we looked at, I think on the next slide, we looked at municipal housing corporation, nonprofit model, a model where we would partner with a nonprofit society, and then the in-house function, which was sort of a control. So in consultation with district staff, we looked at a set of 14 criteria. These criteria range from items around governance of organizational structure, the legal and tax implications, financial implications, and then how this structure might roll out. So when we looked at these 14 criteria across, we weighted them, we did a bunch of research, we had a legal review done, all of these items sort of led us to two of these items. Once they were weighted, essentially coming in with option C, the nonprofit model, being recommended as the highest item in a short-term model. So that's what's happening now, and Gary's going to touch on that a little bit later and sort of running through what that current structure is looking like as it looks towards the Buckley site, the partnership with a nonprofit. So essentially, the goals of that short-term option are to have, it's an initial step in affordable housing and development and operations. It uses the existing capacity that exists in the nonprofit sector in the community while maintaining positive community perceptions by partnering with an existing nonprofit society, while the district can make an ownership of the land at the outset. So it was a short-term option. It does not create additional units or address the long-term goals of the district as it related to the 14 criteria. So when it came down to a longer-term option, that scoring criteria really looked at those two additional options, a nonprofit model, or municipal housing corporation, were really the two options that came out on top. So these came out on top because there was managerial autonomy that could come out of them, control over the day-to-day, or that the corporation could have, but also have a recording relationship with the district. The district could hold a share of the responsibility while limiting liability. The organization could have access to multiple forms of funding and financing for a variety of funding sources, which could include direct funding from the district. The organization could be quickly and effectively implemented, and the organization, another goal of this model would be that the district didn't want to see the organization duplicate existing resources in the community. So this is the discussion that we want to have today. So municipal housing corporation and a nonprofit model, we're going to go a little bit into sort of what each of those might look like from an advantages and risks perspective, sort of frame out the brackets, as Gary was mentioning, that we want to have that discussion with you today. So our goals there to review that program, and then sort of have a discussion around the vision, goals, and brackets. So we want to confirm out those items, the vision, the goals that were initially identified in the affordable housing program, and then look at those brackets. So we'll just get into a little bit of information on the municipal housing corporation and what that means. So when we're looking at that municipal housing corporation model, we've got, essentially it would be a company whose purpose is to develop and operate housing in Squamish, and the district would likely be the sole shareholder. It would be a corporation that would be under a business act. They would operate at arms-length from the district. They would have control over the asset base, and there would be long-term future profits of sort. In terms of long-term, we are speaking like quite long-term, probably not in the five to 10 years, but more likely 20-plus. In terms of an advantage for easily actionable, when we speak about easily actionable, we mean that it would be an item that the district could easily begin a legal process and the corporation could exist. In terms of, there would be a longer-term process in terms of acquiring units or building units and then moving forward, and that longer-term process of them being self-sustaining. That wouldn't necessarily be the easy actionable component. In terms of some of the risks, sole shareholder, if that was the model that we looked at, you would hold all the risk as the district. Meeting built up an asset base is a significant component. As municipal housing corporations, there is a direct relationship with tenants. There could be seen as duplication with existing efforts that exist in the community, specifically those within the nonprofit sector. And operationally, it's expensive in terms of holding resources for staffing. We've listed a few examples, and we can get into those a little later as we talk through some of the brackets, but a few examples of some municipal housing corporations include WHA, Capital Regional Housing Corporation in Greater Victoria, and the Tepino Housing Corporation. So all of those are a little different, and it's been set up in different ways to address specific community needs. And we're set up at different times, which also influences how their self-sustaining operations are sort of attempting to work or are working. In terms of the long-term details of a nonprofit model, the one that we're looking at here is an umbrella option, is the option that we're looking at. So it's somewhat of a superstructure of nonprofits. So the membership would include the district and the other nonprofits working to address housing altogether. So that's how we're looking at this. Advantages would be that we'd be leveraging the existing societies and the communities through this umbrella model, so altogether. Again, it could operate at arms-length. The asset base already exists within the community. All of those nonprofits have assets, so we'd be adding to them. The risks would be mitigated by that multi-partner approach. We'd be leveraging existing community operational resources. The district would not necessarily need to have a direct relationship with tenants, but set more a high-level policy direction. And the mandate would be more flexible, because we wouldn't be legislated per se. Or we're not legislated, we wouldn't be stuck in a corporate structure. The mandate could move and flow more easily. In terms of some risks, the funding model would be primarily through government agencies long-term. There would be less direct operational control, and we would not necessarily be developing a district-owned asset base. A few examples that we've listed include the Comox Valley Coalition to End Homelessness, the Aboriginal Coalition to End Homelessness in Greater Victoria, and Metro Vancouver's Aboriginal Executive Council, which are all umbrella groups of nonprofit societies. And again, we can chat through some of those as we sort of go through the bracketing components of this conversation, and sort of where on some of each bracketing spectrum, the different organizations fit. So we also thought we'd just touch on funding options within both this housing corporation and nonprofit piece. So a corporation, the district would be the sole shareholder, the corporation would need to hire staff. So district funds would likely need to support that in the short term. There would be some grants that the corporation would be eligible for. The corporation would not necessarily, like municipality, be tied to borrowing only through the MFA. The debt of a corporation does go against the municipality's borrowing abilities, and the goal of becoming self-sustaining in the long term is an option for housing corporations, but does require a significant asset base, so it would take some time. For a nonprofit, district funds would be required for startups, a board of directors would need to hire staff. You could, you can receive various forms of assistance from the municipality, including dedicated tax. You'd be eligible for a wide array of grants, as opposed to sort of some. A nonprofit can carry their own debt, and it would likely require some ongoing district support. So again, we can get into those a little bit more, but I'm going to pass it over to Gary to talk about the sort of current structures.
Thanks very much, Katie. I don't know if there are any questions before, that's the sort of background of how we got to where we're at. If there are any questions on that, we can certainly answer those, but failing that, we can keep going.
Counsel, are there any questions at this point? Okay, it looks like they're non-mixed, Mr. Buxton, so please carry on.
Okay, so, thank you. So this is an attempt to demonstrate the current way that the program is structured. Now, the graphic in front of you contains organizations and documents in the same, so it's a bit of a, it's not really an organizational plan. It's a bit of a blend of both. You have documents in green and organizations in other colors. So you can see that we're on the right. So this is how structured, how we're going to handle the units that we get through CAC contributions from developers, through the interim partnering agreement option with the operator, which is Cedar Sky Community Services. We, council's previous direction is to negotiate that, and it's under development. That will be shared with council at the end of this session. I didn't want to provide it today. It's not the appropriate place to get into that level of detail. Similarly, on the housing agreement bylaw, which I'll go through, again, I'll provide those. We'll provide this PowerPoint presentation to council at the end as well, so for reference. So what we can see then is the district has a number of documents surrounding it. At the bottom is the PAH policy. That informs tenant eligibility and program requirements for affordability. It provides our essential definition of affordability. That's our essential policy document. So that's connected to the partnering agreement, in that the partnering agreement has to ensure that affordable housing is operated in accordance. Above the district, that blue box in the district, and we have the housing agreement bylaw, or the Section 219 covenant, that we enter into between the developer and owner and builder of the CAC units, which is the dark gray box at the top. Those people, or that developer, will continue to own those units, but how those are operated are driven by the housing agreement bylaw, which again is informed by the PAH policy. So that directs how the developer must operate those units. Similarly, those provisions are echoed through the partnering agreement to Cedar Sky Community Services. So they're our partner and operator of the unit. So they'll have a head lease. So they'll take one lease with the developer or builder for those PAH units. And then below that, there'll be subleases for the eligible tenants. So that's how, that's the structure of the current, the way that it's currently set up with that partnering agreement directing how the partner and operator must operate. The housing agreement bylaw providing that direction to the developer. So are there any questions on that?
Councillor Race.
Thank you. Gary, could you just refresh my memory? Does our public or professional affording housing policy specify, I know it sets a criteria about affordability and so forth, but does it specify, I'll call it the types of people that might become tenants? And I say that because some of the nonprofits, for example, have specific focuses around vulnerable populations, or seniors, or things like that. Does our policy distinguish at all, or might we go down that road? Or do we look for people who are just looking for, in economic terms, housing they can
The answer to your question is yes, there are criteria. They're based around length of residency in the community, income, and assets. So there are asset caps, income caps, and residency requirements. So yes, there are, that pool of potential tenants is different from the pool of tenants that other programs and other nonprofits operate. So those are the issues that we can get into, and how we reconcile those are issues that we'll get into in the conversation later on this morning.
Good. Thanks, Gary.
Very good. And just checking in, it's a little slow on the refresh. Okay, Mr. Buxton, I believe there are no other questions.
Okay, so we can cut to the next slide. So the current documentation, those two key documents that we have, one of which is the partnering agreement with Cedar Sky Community Services. It's a lengthy, it's a fairly lengthy document. It's very technical in nature, so I will share that with you. I'll get to that in a moment. And the other one is the Section 219, the housing agreement covenant, which is the document we execute with the developer. A lot of the same provisions, because they both reference the perpetually affordable housing policy, the key requirements around how those units are operated are echoed in both documents. Say, one goes to the partner, one goes to the developer that provides the units. If we can go to the next slide. So the Section 219 covenant, the housing agreement with the developer, is to ensure long-term that those units remain affordable. So again, there are occupant size and rent limits specified in that agreement, and those come out of the PAH policy. There are design and construction standards that ensure that the affordable units are built to the same or similar standards as the market units. There are limits on sales and subdivision of the perpetually affordable units. We want to try and keep those in one block, so that we're dealing with one manager, one owner. So we have a one-to-one relationship and not a one-to-many relationship, making administration far more difficult. There are limits in that housing agreement to strata bylaws, so it prevents the strata from passing bylaws that may interfere with affordability requirements. And then this has a section on penalties and remedies, so that if the owner, builder, developer is in default, then there are financial and other penalties and remedies available to the district to get it, to get them back in line, so to speak. Again, I'll provide a copy of this at the end of the session today. But say this, that document will be approved each time that we enter into a housing bylaw with council. So that's frequently going to be on council's table, so it doesn't need to have an individual approval. The partnering agreement, however, will get a one-time approval with council in the coming months, when I bring that back for approval. So this is with Cedar Sky Community Services Society, and this is really around the management and operation of affordable CAC housing units that the district gains access to. So this outlines a number of things, including the requirement to have a head lease with the building owner. The society is required to maintain an eligibility review process and a wait list to ensure that the tenants coming in and out of the project are consistent with the PAH policy. They are required to manage the tenant in-and-out process, so getting tenants in and evictions if necessary, or replacing tenants upon move-out. So that whole process is managed by the partner, and we are isolated from that. We really don't need to be dealing with those issues at council table, and really do not want to be dealing with that. The partner keeps all records of those rental transactions, both financial and personal. We can audit or request a look at those on an as-needed basis. And then the funding that we're proposing, the preliminary funding in this agreement is around $25,000 startup to execute the agreement and get it up and running, and then around $4,000 a month gets us management of up to 50 units of perpetually affordable housing, rental units. So there is an ongoing cost to this, but there will be under any of the scenarios, except of course unless, at some point if the organization or the corporation becomes financially self-supporting. If you want to go to the, oh, so the, yes, if you look at the next, how the structure exists, it's relatively, it's relatively the same. In the middle, you have a partnering agreement or articles of incorporation that connects the district with the housing entity or corporation. But again, we will be looking at a housing agreement bylaw and a PH policy that guide both those documents, provide the same direction to the developer or builder. The housing agency or entity corporation would have a head lease and a sublease with eligible tenants. I've also tried to sketch out, that's under a rental stream. So that's, on the left then is the new portion, so if there's an ownership stream, there would be subleases or sales through leathold interests back to eligible owners. interests back to eligible owners, um, in the future. That's much, that's sort of further looking at to when we can, when we can develop an ownership program. And then the eight, the corporation or the entity, if you just click, keep clicking through the presentation, yeah, you're going to see that, um, that there are individual projects that the corporation could have and control or build or, or may have, um, in its, if we were to coordinate or collaborate with an existing nonprofit, those buildings already exist. And again, as, as Counselor Race noted, some of them may have different, um, tenant makeups than, than the, than the ones that anticipated in the PAH policy. So they may be targeted towards a different market. But the, the units that, that the district controls primarily would, would be subject to these either, the, the rental stream or the ownership stream. And again, that's managed through, um, that ongoing partnering agreement or articles of incorporation to direct how that, how that corporation or optimization would operate.
Mr. Buxton, um, we have a question from Mayor Elliott for you.
Absolutely.
Um, Mr. Buxton, so would this diagram look the same if, um, if we did another Buckley Avenue project where we're the developer and the owner of the land? Like, do we just put ourselves in that gray box and the right side disappears? Or do all these things still happen?
No, the Buckley would be akin, um, closest to one of the red boxes on the left.
Okay.
And we also have a question from Counselor Stoner.
Thank you, to the chair. Mr. Buxton, we've talked about this before in terms of how we actually secure those affordable CAC units from developers and if we are able to actually require them to go through the housing corporation. Do we have any clarity on that piece, uh, as to how we actually secure those units and require them to go through this process?
Yes, so that's contained in the housing agreement bylaw. Um, we are requiring that the, um, that those CAC units must stay. There are provisions in the housing agreement bylaw and the, the 219 covenant that specify that they must remain available to eligible tenants for the lifetime of the building. So they are, through that covenant, protected that way. There is a requirement that the, that the units be managed, um, by a single entity or owned by a single owner. Um, we will certainly be encouraging, um, owners to use the, the partnering agreement and Cedar Sky's services. We're not still certain that we can do that 100% with a rezoning. It's certainly, we have a much stronger case to require them. Um, so I would suggest that, um, in most cases, we'll be, we will be able to ensure that those are managed through the partnering agreement and our partner. Um, there may be a, a developer who has his or her own rental program who, who may wish to retain management of that. But again, they will have to manage, they will then have to manage, um, in accordance with the, the same principles under the partnering agreement. So it's going to be fairly onerous for them to, um, to ensure that tenant, it's, it won't be a regular tenant intake-outtake process. I mean, there's means testing, there's asset testing, all of these things that aren't very typical and normal rental, rental programs. So I anticipate that most will want to pass that responsibility through to our partner. Some may not if they have a good, solid rental, uh, management program of their own.
Counselor Stoner, follow up.
Thank you. In that scenario then, do we risk having multiple lists of eligible folks for different projects or different housing pools? If there's one list being held by the housing entity and then a developer chooses to manage their own rentals, then do they hold their own list?
Quite possibly, but it's not, it's not unusual for individual buildings to have their own wait lists and for an organization to wait list by project. It's not unusual, I'd say it's fairly common. In some cases, because the projects are mainly different. So if you've got a townhouse project with two and three-bedroom units, um, it's a different target market to an apartment building with small one, one and studio bedrooms. So it's not uncommon for that to happen anyway. If we have this umbrella, um, it's certainly much easier for those, um, to cross-reference those wait lists. But yes, with, with an individual owner managing their own units, yes, there would be a separate, there would be a separate wait list, but they would be required to maintain that, um, through the, the housing agreement bylaw. I think that might be it for. Yes, so we've covered the, the background as to what got us to here and the, and the work conducted to date. Um, we have an overview of the, the current structure, proposed structure and the documentation, which I say we will provide both of those to counsel for review. The partnering agreement will be coming back to counsel, um, like a Q3 for approval. And the partnering agreement, I mean, sorry, the, the housing agreement bylaw and the section 219 covenant come back each time for approval with counsel. So that sort of gets us to the point where we start the conversation. I think we're a little bit ahead of schedule. So, um, if we want to start this and then take a break, or if we want to take a break now, we can do that. To the chair.
Yes. Counsel, does anybody have a preference? We've only been at this for 37 minutes, so I'm inclined to power through and, uh, break a little bit farther along. Does that work for you, Mr. Buxton?
I believe it does. If we target maybe another half hour, go to around nine, uh, 10:15.
And we'll take a break at 10:15?
If that's agreeable to the group, we will do that.
Let's do that.
Okay, Katie and the McCullough crew, I think it's back to you.
Sure, thanks, Gary. Uh, it's Sandy here. I'm going to be taking on this section. Um, and maybe I'll just give Counselor Race about 30 seconds to get back with his cup of coffee. I felt like that was the, he held up his mug. I felt like that was the universal symbol for needing five seconds to have a cup of coffee, so we'll give him a couple of minutes. And while he's doing that, we can, uh, review that slide that we showed you earlier, which is today's goals. So, uh, I think there's a really natural stopping point at the end of this section and maybe that's where we can take our break.
Yeah, that sounds great.
So, yeah, so I, I think that should take us to that, uh, 10:15 mark, but maybe if we end a little early, I think that's fine as well. Uh, so today's goals, again, review the current program, which Gary has eloquently done, and also to review kind of how we got to where we are, which is what Katie took on at the beginning there. And then we'll be hosting sort of a facilitated discussion on the key components of this new Squamish housing organization, whatever that is. We'll be looking at the vision and goals, which were already set out in the FHO document from 2018. So we'll be trying to confirm those and run them by you to make sure that they're still relevant. And then we'll, uh, do some bit on these brackets, which will guide our conversations with the nonprofit sector and include a bunch of different considerations around governance, financing, things like that. When you think about these brackets, it's going to, basically you're, you're helping us key in on what exactly you want from our organization. Both the nonprofit and the corporate model have a huge, broad range of abilities, a lot of which overlap. So by doing this bracketing discussion, we're getting closer to the model that works best for the district in Squamish. So if you Matt, we can just go into the, the vision slide, which is next. Great, thanks. So this vision, uh, was developed a couple of years ago and, uh, you know, as a lot of these visions are, it's pretty broad and, uh, gets to a few key points. So the first is that it's looking at low to moderate income households. It's also looking at core housing need within the district. And it's, a, a key piece here is that it will work with the district and communities to sustain a diverse range in supply. And then the last piece is that fiscally responsible mandates. Um, so when we look at, um, the gaps that Katie was talking about earlier that we identified through our, uh, Housing Needs Assessment Report, which is the next slide, we can sort of see how the vision will start to address different pieces. Along the bottom there, you see that classic housing spectrum in the darkest color, emergency and transitional shelters. I apologize, it's a little hard to read on your screens probably, and on the far-right market ownership. Um, so the places where this vision was initially thought it would be perfect, this is exactly where that initial vision is meant to, uh, to hit, that low to moderate income households. So we're looking at independent social housing, affordable rental housing and market rental housing. Uh, that affordable home ownership piece that Gary mentioned a second ago, that can come in to either of these models. It does take more time than the rental structure. Um, and so for the independent social housing, that is sort of that transitional street for individuals who are moving along the housing continuum. Um, and there's a supply of those units throughout the continuum. In affordable rental housing, we're looking at housing with rents and schedules, i.e., seasonal options, which would be suitable for hospitality workers as well as, uh, affordable family housing. And then, uh, lastly, we're looking at, uh, they have to be, it's not just about affordability in that four-months place, it also has to be facilities and amenities to sneak into the housing. And then the last piece on the, the right in that, uh, dark red box is that market rental housing, which would include purpose-built rental housing and of course, uh, policy for short-term vacation. So those were the gaps that were, uh, identified in that report and that dark red box is where that initial vision would hit. But as, as Counselor Race sort of was inquiring, there are a lot of different, uh, needs in your community. So we've included this dotted red box to represent where, uh, different models can be extended, especially the nonprofit model, as many of the nonprofits in your community are already addressing those two elements on the far right, not far left. So the far left is emergency and transitional shelters, which would include affordable housing for singles, often at the sort of, uh, BC provincial shelter rates. Um, it's also safe and affordable housing for single-income families as well as mentally violent. And then housing and supports for unhoused individuals in your community. Supportive housing is a sort of step up, so that would include youth transitioning out of care. So those are youth who are aging out of the traditional care programs, includes housing with supports for people, uh, in, uh, recovery from addiction issues. And then it includes housing, uh, with support for people with mental health and, and addiction issues. So that's kind of where we could extend or look to build, uh, more into your, uh, vision for this program. Uh, but maybe to return to that vision slide, Matt? Uh, just a couple of questions. This today is meant to be discussion-oriented, so, uh, I appreciate that without the benefit of seeing you all in person, it can be difficult to have a robust discussion, but we'll, we'll do our best through this. Um, so I, I think what I wanted to focus on is, is, is this still a, um, is this still to the Squamish housing organization's intent to serve? 2018 does not seem like that long ago, but frankly, January seems like 10 years ago. So, uh, a lot can change in two years and a lot definitely has changed. Um, since that 2018 report came out, we've gotten a better look at a lot of the 2016 census data and maybe you're seeing things change in your communities. Since that 2018 report came out, maybe, um, you're interested in a different and more broader vision. And even in the last six months, with the realities of COVID-19 hitting your communities, has this vision changed and, or is it still where you'd like it to be? So maybe I will, uh, open the floor briefly, see if there's any thoughts or questions, uh, or even just a, a discussion point around this or her clarification.
Counselor Penningill and followed by Counselor Anderson.
So just want to touch on something that I think Counselor Race raised and raised some questions for me, um, and that I'm trying to sort through. So in that diagram, we have supportive housing that identifies people with addictions, issues and so on. Right now, that's outside of, uh, the target we've identified. But within our existing target, there are people who are maybe in a later stage of recovery or they have mobility issues and so on. They don't need or qualify for supportive housing, but there's definite affordability challenges tied to that context. And so I guess my question is, for that cohort, is that something we're trying to address particularly and they would have priority beyond, like it's not just an affordability issue, you've got these other underlying things and, and therefore we want to give more, uh, weight in terms of waiting list management and so on there?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point, uh, Counselor Penningill. And I think, uh, I, I would encourage my colleagues or Gary to jump in at any point if they've got extra things to add to this conversation. But, uh, yeah, the, that spectrum, you know, we're, we're actually been planning moving away from a spectrum model. We're moving towards a wheelhouse model, which was developed as a part of Colonna's Housing Needs Assessment. It is a tool that is increasingly being adopted across, um, communities in, in Canada as well as in DC, uh, because it gets at that point, which is that, uh, we can't isolate need to certain portions of the housing spectrum. Need goes across those portions and it's sort of accessibility, uh, units or people facing addiction can exist in more than one place along that housing spectrum. And, uh, there's a couple of other reasons why the wheelhouse is good. First and foremost, the spectrum implies a linear relationship moving from left to right along that line as the way to show progress or the way to show that you're, you know, improving, whereas, you know, a wheelhouse or a circular model, um, is much better at, at understanding the realities of accessing housing in your communities, which is that maybe falling from a market rental into a supported option, if it's not failure, it is, um, it's just a reality of your situation. So, um, that's, that's a really good point to say that a lot of those, um, issues that we maybe categorize as being on the left of the spectrum exists throughout the spectrum. Yeah, I don't know if I'm actually getting at what you're asking there, Counselor Penningill, but there is, um, there's a lot of nuance in this and ability to address those things in that dark red box.
Yes, please, go ahead, Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, thank you. And, yeah, no, I think you did get at what I was asking about, but I'm just wondering, I'm not familiar with the wheelhouse model. Can you clarify a bit with that?
Sure. So it's the same as the spectrum, except that we have started categorizing it as a circle instead. And so having each of those spectrum places be, um, like a pie in a, in a pie graph, basically. Um, and initially, they were conceptualized as, uh, in Colonna is basically one-third as being that emergency, um, and transitional and supportive options, one-third as being the sort of low end-of-market, um, mid-market option. So that would address not only people who, um, would be accessing, uh, rental assistance through something like DC housing, but also, um, incorporating the need that we see, um, identified by core housing need. So core housing, oh, perfect, thank you, Matt. So, um, yeah, this is, it's, it's, this is actually on the Canada Morning House Corporation website. The, it has quite been very successful. It was featured, uh, in a lot of national publications and has garnered a lot of attention. So you see that safety net piece, which is your emergency shelter and short-term supportive housing. Housing with supports would be subsidized rental housing and long-term supportive options. That also gets at folks who are currently accessing market housing but are in core housing need, which means that their needs are not being served by the market. So, um, trying to reconceptualize how we think of supports and to, uh, de-stigmatize accessing housing supports. And then in market housing, we see ownership and rental housing. So, you know, this is better because it encourages us to think of ownership as only one-sixth of our housing pie rather than, uh, you know, a much broader piece. Um, and now we're actually seeing communities take a look at this and, uh, weigh certain sections. So looking at how, weighting it either in terms of how much support is required in each section. So for example, in ownership housing, very little government support is required, even though, uh, ownership housing does receive quite a lot of support. Uh, rental housing is where you see a need for more support, so that piece of the pie would be bigger, subsidized rental, bigger as well. And then, um, you know, different types of support from provincial and municipal levels as well as nonprofit sector and, you know, emergency shelter and short-term supportive housing. So lots of different ways to think about this and encouraging us to think of, of the need as, um, not being isolated to those, um, spectrum pieces is a good way to start, yeah. Thank you.
May I add something?
Yes, please, Mr. Buxton.
Yeah, getting back to Counselor Penningill's sort of original question, the, the original concept of the organization with that limited part of the spectrum doesn't have program supports. It was really intended to focus in on housing models that can be financially self-sustaining. So that sort of, even So that sort of, even if it's marginal supportive programs, that is really at the very, very edge, if not slightly outside of where the sort of traditional corporate organizational model was at. So if council was looking for something that's a bit wider on the spectrum, then it's not going to get very far into that supportive part of the wheelhouse or the spectrum. Hence, we're having this conversation if, if the intent is to broaden that, then the, what we're calling the umbrella is a more robust means of getting there.
Yeah, thanks, Gary. And we definitely do not need to change the vision today, absolutely. We can revisit that throughout this process if the bracketing conversation points us towards a broader mandate.
Very good. Next up, I have Counselor Anderson, followed by Counselor Rice.
Thank you. My question or topic of history is employee housing. And I'll refer to the Whistler Housing Authority, which has already been mentioned in the presentation. Of course, that organization had its origin and most of its impetus in the need to address employee housing in Whistler. So we have today, or I would, I'd like to go back a couple of years because I believe that the last year has changed somewhat. And this is some taken into account, but we have companies taking over floors of hotels, building suites, sometimes under difficult circumstances in various places, including warehouses and so on, purchasing houses to work as essentially bunkhouses. This is ongoing throughout the community. I think this company describes it as a serious problem for businesses, and even for this local business sector. So my question is, where have my bits been into the picture? At least we can say, or from your proposals, that the functions of Squamish Housing Organization will involve working as a resource, a network. It will have planning and policy advice functions as well as monitoring. And it seems to me that this kind of employee housing picture should be part of that scope in at least monitoring. So where does employee housing, where might employee housing fit in the current topic you're putting forward here of functions and scope?
I can have a crack at that, Janie. The fact that the PAH policy has employment requirements effectively makes it employee housing. Now, is it tailored to an individual business? No, but they must be employed, they must be employed locally. The issue of having residential units tied to a particular business is a little bit of a trickier issue. But the way that we conceive perpetually affordable housing, particularly through the CAC units, is by definition employee housing, but not tied, it's general, it's not tied to a particular business. I think there are other policy decisions and options we need to look at if we want to look at residential product of various forms that's tied to a particular, a particular business.
Yeah, thanks, Gary. I can, I can also just, to further your, your question there, Counselor Anderson. As a part of this research, we've done a lot of work looking at the Whistler Housing Authority because it is a fairly popular model across British Columbia. And it is something that we often hear coming up in, not only in your community, but in many other communities, to look at and go, well, why can't we do that? And it does seem like a great solution for many reasons, and it is a great solution for lots of reasons. The Whistler, so the mountain is a key stakeholder in that corporation. And that is, that's a really key element of how that works. If you have further questions about how that corporate structure works, I know that Lindsay has done a lot of research on, on how that, like the intricacies of that are. And there's no reason why, I think, moving forward, that can't be a discussion we have with key employers about what they see their role as being. Both models allow for very large employers to be a part of that governance structure, either as, you know, stakeholders, or potentially as voting members, or maybe as non-voting members. So I think there are ways to incorporate major employers into both structures, maybe as board members or things like that. So I hope, I hope that gets at what you're, you're asking. They are absolutely key players. We saw a major need in that initial study as being housing for employees, and especially seasonal employees. So looking at that is a key role of the S.A.H., is an important part, yeah.
Counselor Anderson, that's everything for you. Okay, very good. Counselor Rice, and then we'll follow with Mayor Elliott.
Thank you. And I was happy with the scope. And the reason I asked the initial question was because I, myself, I draw distinctions between housing and some of the services performed by some of these other organizations that were listed in the report, which have, for lack of a better word, a social component to them with either specified groups like the seniors, for example, or particularly vulnerable populations. And that, to me, is an area that is perhaps, I don't want to say it's adequately covered, but it is covered to an extent already in the community. And I'm not sure that as a municipal government, we want to go down that road. I'm thinking more of just trying to keep management as simple as possible. And you look at this organization that we might set up, which would have, you know, community representatives and so forth, and when you, when you introduce a social element to it with vulnerable populations, that can widen the expertise that's required to make that actually work, and is perhaps even duplicating other organizations. So I'm quite happy to keep it. I think this, from my recollection, going back the last term, this really started off, I think, as a discussion around finding places for people to live who weren't earning a lot of money, but were employed in the community in a variety of different levels, but just could not keep up with the prices. And that was really the initial focus. So I'm happy with, with that vision. The Whistler model, and I'm not an expert in it, there's others that may know more, but it was employees within the municipality. And as well, there was some provision for other residents, like retirees, for example. People that had been employed, they retired, so they automatically get kicked out of their housing, or can they stay in their housing, et cetera. So I think there was an element of that to it, and we might consider something like that if it's not already in our policy. But apart from that, I'm quite content.
Very good. Mayor Elliott.
So sometimes Counselor Rice and I disagree, and I disagree. So I think that the vision actually would be better aligned with that wheelhouse model in 2020. I think that we're all aware that our not-for-profit agencies are better placed to manage that lower end of the spectrum, and they have deep experience doing that. But it is, everything fits together, and it's complex. And we have to be able to move people along the spectrum. So unless that part of the housing continuum or wheelhouse is part of the conversation, I think we miss out on understanding how people move from one type of housing to another. And also, there's the risk, if it's not managed, I think, holistically, that we overbuild in one area and underbuild in another, which actually can really disrupt operating models as well. Because if we have an oversupply, it drives rents down. And if there's an undersupply, then that can also have an impact. I also think council added to their strategic plan, having affordable home ownership options as part of the mix by the end of this term, which is 2022. And I think we see that in our own turnover in staff and our ability to attract staff even to the district, let alone the broader community, is that people still do aspire to own a home in some way, shape, or form. They do see that as part of their trajectory and how their life sort of evolves. So I think it's important that that's captured in, in our consideration. So I think the vision could be, could expand to include home ownership. Maybe the vague language about lots of, you know, housing options maybe captures that. But I think, I think the wheelhouse model is something I'd like to see us move towards because I think it does speak to the interconnectedness and the, the ability in people's lives to transition from one to the other, up and down, or throughout that wheelhouse any number of times based on their need. And talking with some of our not-for-profits, the line between housing and homelessness is a very thin line. It only takes a few bad things to happen in someone's life, and, and they find themselves precariously housed. So I think the wheelhouse better addresses that than the continuum model. I might have more to say on it once we, we explore the two options in more detail. Thank you.
Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, thank you. And just to add a bit of clarification, hopefully, you know, when I was sort of asking the question, I wasn't necessarily thinking about adding services to the section we were talking about. I was more wondering, in managing wait lists, do, you know, additional factors come into our decision of where you fall in the waitlist? So the only issue, we're sort of, you know, we're providing that affordability piece, but we prioritize if you have additional challenges beyond affordability, but we're not actually providing any services for those other challenges. And, you know, I think before when we talked about this, we weren't going to make distinction even where you fell on the income spectrum. If you're across the threshold, you qualify equally. And so I guess this makes questions back sort of a little bit. Do we start to distinguish, you know, where you are below the threshold and where you are in terms of other challenges you face without adding services necessarily?
Mr. Buxton.
Yes, the answer to that question to, for Counselor Penningill is no. The current eligibility requirements for the PAH units that we have don't. It simply is income, assets, and employment and residency. There is no distinction at this point to, on the criteria. Because then you're wait, you are sort of broadening the spectrum, which is not, not a bad thing. But you're waiting into service area discussions where our nonprofit partners are very capable of acting. So I guess we're looking at, do we start to, through this organization, coordinate that so we can pick up that part of the spectrum?
Counselor Rice, followed by Counselor Stoner.
Always love debating things with the mayor. And I take the point, what I'm focusing on when I'm saying, you know, I like where we are in the spectrum, spectrum seems to become sort of a bad word now, but, but just that scope. Because I don't know to widen it. I mean, I recognize these other areas are very necessary. And if you had a wheel, they're all there, and which parts of the wheel might we undertake? I think it's more the question. And so from my perspective, I said, I don't think we want to get into the social side of housing, but rather keep it on the economic level, in other words, income levels. When you start talking about home ownership, that's quite a different thing. And I know the Whistler Housing Authority does that. In fact, I was involved with a group that donated the first chunk of land to them way back, where they actually built some, some buildings that people could actually buy, and price control took over after that. So there are, but it's quite a different function. You know, ownership, getting somebody into a property means somebody has to sort of provide the property and build the building, and then you control resales and so forth. So that's quite a different deal. And I think one of the original slides showed that, you know, that is a possibility. We have the capability of expanding it. But I, I'm thinking that this organization that we're talking about is not, when you talk about holistically looking at it, I think we can, but the organization we're talking about it, I think, is going to have to have kind of a management scope, rather than sort of cover everything from one end of that spectrum to the other. And so I think, from my perspective, I'm happier with the way that slide came out with the three boxes in the middle, rather than trying to undertake the whole thing. It doesn't mean that we don't support and acknowledge these other areas. And for example, we support now those four nonprofits in one way or another, waiving fees and providing land and taxes being waived and stuff like that. So I think we can still support them, but we're talking about an entity that we're trying to put together, and what is the scope of that entity? And for the time being at least, I'm thinking that we just keep it focused on what our original thought was, was providing staff housing, or housing for our businesses. Thanks, Chair.
Counselor Stoner.
Thank you, to the chair. I think I'm still having a little bit of a hard time teasing apart the actual wording in the vision versus what came out on the graph. So the graph has the solid red box around the low to moderate income, and then the dotted box around the far left side. But the vision statement actually speaks specifically to low to moderate income households and core housing, the core needs housing within the district. And so does the, from other, this is a question for Gary or for Sandy. Does the vision in the wording actually include both? Or does it tend to simply include the side on the left?
Yeah, I think you could make an argument for either, right? I don't think it precludes either one. It's a vision, and it's meant to be broad. So it's meant to give us the ability to, to kind of work within a pretty broad parameters. I think when I read that, it was probably, I mean, core housing need is everywhere along the spectrum, right? So when we talk about core housing need, that could be in ownership housing. There are owners in core housing need fairly frequently. Renters tend to be in core housing need to a much higher level. I don't have the Squamish statistics in front of me, but it's, it's the difference between rental core housing and owner core housing need is usually double or more than double in the rental market. We talked about extreme core housing need, which is when you're paying more than 50% of your pay on your rent or your mortgage. We're seeing that ownership almost drops to zero usually, and rentership stays very high. So definitely higher rates in that low to moderate income rental categories. But there's many different aspects to core housing need, including if you are someone who has a special need, like you need an accessible unit and you don't have one available for you, you're in core housing need as well. If you have three children and you're only able to afford a two-bedroom home, you are in core housing need. So there are a number of different ways that core housing needs hits across the spectrum. But definitely, we see it highly, more higher concentrated in low to moderate income households and in those who already have the least, right? So those with the least ability to afford or to access housing are also the ones with the least amount of supports, pretty much universally. So that is maybe, that's a good question, and I, I think that the vision gives us room to, to work within it. If we want, maybe we can actually get on, unless there are other questions about the vision, I feel like we could talk about the vision all day long. So it might make sense to proceed to the goals slides, which is kind of where we're going next, unless there are objections, because I think it could help us clarify maybe a bit of what we're talking about, and certainly the bracketing conversation will help us clarify further. So maybe I'll put it back to the, to the chair to see if there are any last questions about the vision before we move on, and just try to watch the time as well and be mindful of our break.
Yes, and if we go a little beyond 10:15, I think that can work. And I don't see any hands, so let's carry on.
Great, Matt, pull up the goals slides. Great. So I mean, the goals were, again, I hate to keep bringing it back to broad stroke, but this is what it is. So here's, here's the goals that were initially thought of in that 2018 document. The first one is to integrate diverse forms of housing into the community. So we talk about diverse forms of housing. We mean not only diverse-looking housing, so from a, you know, a townhouse versus an apartment building, but also, you know, that could be things like infill housing or, and then we also can talk about different types of either tenure or different supportive options in the community. So that's what I mean by diverse, is there's a number of different categories under diverse. It also was to be the primary community resource for all affordable housing in the district. So that then... So that then speaks to a bit of a broader mandate, right? Because all affordable housing, your housing is not affordable if it's, not, it's, yeah, yeah, so there's a lot of different, that's both that low to moderate income piece, but then that also moves left a bit. The third piece was to be the, and that second piece there was designed to be a one-application process. That was the initial goal, right? To be the access point for affordable housing, including a centralized waitlist from which affordable units can be allocated. The third piece was to be the primary resource for affordable housing, property and tenant management in the district. That is a much more complicated piece to put on, and it is work that is being done in your community already. So looking at different ways to incorporate that work that's already being done, or to transfer responsibility as part of this, including administering property management for any district-owned properties and units, and supporting the sustainable operation of other housing units who are being operated by other providers. So it might include assisting providers to streamline operations, or it might include working on partnership agreements to transfer management to a sort of organization, so if multiple different organizations, including the city, are transferring their operations to a single entity. And then lastly, I think a really important one is managing your assets and conducting operations in a physically responsible manner. That's something we tag on to the end of all of these, and sometimes we don't discuss it as fully as we should, but it is absolutely a really important one. So following your best budgetary practices, ensuring adequate reserves for long-term maintenance, repairs, and replacements of any housing organization-owned assets, and ensuring that they're managed effectively with the long-term health and sustainability of your housing market in mind. It also is about, you know, finding efficiencies, right? So looking at all the different organizations that are doing this work right now and helping them identify efficiencies amongst themselves. So, you know, if there are four different nonprofits all facilitating housing in your community, all hiring on different property management firms, and all hiring out different people to cut the lawn and to water the plants and things like that, how can this housing operation help not only the district, but those organizations manage all of those things more effectively? So that's the goals. And then I think what we'll do right before the break is touch on some of the activities. And I think we'll have a couple of, we'll have a couple minutes for questions at the end of this piece, too. So in both models, this is basically district responsibility, right? So in all of these cases where it says on the right there, corporation only, that is where the district would no longer be responsible for that. That responsibility would be transferred to the new Squamish housing organization in the nonprofit umbrella model. So in both models, there's responsibility for housing planning and project development. Both models, we're looking at policy and program research and development, housing site identification, data collection and monitoring, housing advocacy, which is a really important one we forget about. You know, you can't just stop advocating for housing in your communities once you've got this organization formed. So continual monitoring and advocacy for new, as gaps emerge, to allocate resources to those gaps, and then lastly, grant applications. So that's things like PC Housing or CMHC to help build more units. The corporation model, the corporation would also be responsible for operations and resident management, property management, and asset management. So those like day-to-day, nitty-gritty, complicated pieces, if you go with the corporation model, you will have to do those as well. Whereas in the nonprofit model, the district would no longer be responsible, it would be the nonprofit that is responsible. So I think that is the last slide before we go on break. So we do have a couple of minutes for questions if we wanted to talk about the goals and the activities. Both of these come from that same report, that 2018 SHO report. And I think, I don't know if that helped clarify anything in terms of the vision conversation, but I'm hoping it kind of gets us to a point where we're more able to see those brackets and actually provide some, start like narrowing our focus on how we're approaching this.
Mayor Elliott has a question.
Not so much a question, but over the break, could you email the slides to council so that we have the ability to go back and forth during the conversation? That would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely.
Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, thank you. And it's been a while since I've seen them, I guess. But looking at the goals, to my mind, they seem oriented towards how the SHO will stay busy. But we, I feel like we might be missing some of the, a bit more detail. The vision lays it out a bit, but as someone needing or wanting housing, what will my experience be because the SHO exists? And because that, I think, is what we really care about, and I'm not sure I have full clarity on that piece.
Okay. You know what, I might actually point you, see if Lindsay can take this one on. She is one of our development experts that deals more day-to-day with the actual development and management of some of these properties. So, well, maybe let Lindsay take that question.
Sure, thanks, Cindy. Hi, everyone. So, I mean, it's a really good question. Thanks, Counselor. I think it depends largely on the type of organization that the district ends up enacting, right? So I think if we go more towards this umbrella model, then I think my experience as somebody seeking housing provides more of a one-stop shop, right? So now I've got this, you know, assuming not to buy in, I've now got this one-stop-shop to sort of be able to get on a waitlist, coordinate a waitlist, or have access to a full understanding of what is available in the community. If we were to go more towards the municipal housing corporation model, then I think it would be, then that experience would really be applied to the housing corporation for housing. And for sure, you could do referrals and also, you know, be well aware of what the other partners in the community have available and how to get on their waitlist, but it would be much more of a tenant, and that's where that direct tenant relationship starts to come in, right? Like the tenant is actually coming to the corporation, which would be, you know, wholly owned by the district, and applying for housing through them, signing a tenancy agreement directly with the housing corporation. Housing corporation is then responsible for move-in, move-out inspections, maintenance, rent collection, everything that a property manager does.
Go ahead, Counselor Penningill.
So if I could just follow up, do you have a sense then, if we did one or the other, as someone looking for a home, one path would be easier, quicker, cheaper for me than the other? If at the end of the day, I just want home?
Yeah, and I mean, I think the vision's going to dictate that, right? So if the housing corporation has a vision and a mandate to provide housing, let's just say we keep with the definitions that's out there, low to moderate income housing, then that's the type of housing assets that the corporation will be looking to develop and build. And then, you know, presumably you would have a waitlist that's prioritized based on, like, at the time on the waitlist, income, asset cap, and, you know, residency within the, or employment in the district. And so in that sense, you know, whereas if the vision was, you know, more focused on, I don't know, on a homeownership piece, then that would dictate how, you know, what housing the corporation's offering that I have access to. I do think what's nice about the umbrella option is that it does offer that ability to coordinate access and coordinate waitlists with other providers that are offering housing in the community. So as opposed to just going and filling out a separate waitlist for each, right? You're really going to a coalition or an umbrella group who has all that information already compiled.
Could I just offer a quick comment before we close? Part of the issue that we need to keep in mind in setting up a sort of this, let's call it the corporation model that's municipally run, that's directed and run according to the PAH policy, with that more narrow set of tenants, the stock or the cap, the units that are available under that now would be, and for the foreseeable future, would be quite limited. Until we start to accumulate those through CAC contributions and through developers, the stock that it would have access to would be quite limited, and we would be coordinating with others, the other nonprofits. Rather than the umbrella is, well, let's figure out how to put them all into one, our units, their units, all into one, and have an organization that sort of coordinates from that point, rather than having an organization talking to each other, there is an organization. So from a, if it's a purely municipal operation, the numbers and the stock of units for the foreseeable future is going to be quite small, so there would be a lot of coordination with others. Maybe we should, we should take a quick break now and come back to this.
Well, Counselor Race had his hand up, so can we just, go ahead, Counselor Race.
Thank you. And I'll try to be quick, because going back to Ms. Monk's answer to Counselor Penningill, it strikes me when you start talking about umbrella organizations, if somebody is looking for housing, at some point, they have to be assessed, I would think. And I'm not sure how some of the existing nonprofits find their clientele. I mean, the seniors is pretty obvious, but at some point, they have to be assessed to see if they qualify. And with the vulnerable populations, I'm not sure how they actually are directed to a particular organization. But really, are we talking about one organization that handles all these different types of housing, or are we talking more of a sort of a central reservation system that could sort of distribute people where they're best suited? And what part of that does the district play? Because I'll go back to the other thing, I'm not sure that the organization we're talking about here today, what is intended or might be effective covering or trying to cover the whole spectrum? And so accepting maybe a very limited role is perhaps a sort of the entry point or the initial gateway or the cross-referencing of lists and stuff like that. We're talking about what kind of housing are we going to be providing through this entity, and that might be a lot narrower. So I think we might be talking about two different things. But I'll leave it at that, and we can think about that over the break.
Yeah, okay, that's a, that's a great idea. Thank you, Counselor Race. I'm proposing that we break now and reconvene at 10:30. Welcome back. Now, before the break, Counselor Race had a question, and we left it hanging a little bit. Counselor Race, will you do a recap of that and just bring us back to where we were and get that rolling?
Thank you, Chair. So it was the question, it came out of Counselor Penningill's question, you know, as a person looking for housing, what do you do? How do you go into or through one of these systems? And if it was something just as simple as a financial consideration of a means test, and the district had a bunch of units with certain criteria around it, then that would be the place you'd come. And I guess the question is, and we've talked about it, and it comes out in conversations every now and then, of some kind of umbrella organization, and would that include some of the, for lack of a better term, the social housing nonprofits, Helping Hands, Under One Roof, et cetera? And how would people get directed to that, or would they get directed to that through this organization? Does this organization directly have any relationship with them, or necessary relationship with them? Because we might be dealing with two different sets of clientele. So, or whether we have kind of one sort of entry point for somebody who might get assessed and directed to one of the nonprofits, or directed to a particular district building that suits their needs. But for example, seniors, I mean, if the seniors' housing project is full, and the senior comes along, they might get on a waiting list for that, but they might also be quite satisfied with a similar unit somewhere else in the same area. Or would they get directed and dealt with? Would they have to go to the seniors' thing? So there's all kinds of questions around that sort of entry point and how you actually navigate through the system. But I think from my perspective, this discussion is around the entity and the scope of the entity, and tied a focus on that rather than the whole spectrum. You know, going off into ownership, for example, I have a little bit of history with that, and as I said, and so that's a whole different thing. And if we wanted to start considering that end of the spectrum, affordable ownership, then we have to, I think, revise our CAC policy and start taking chunks of land from developers as opposed to cash, so that we can go and build some of these units and manage them and set the price, and it hasn't tied to indexes, and there's all kinds of different tools you can use. But that's a bit of a different deal than I think what we're talking about with this particular unit. Or it could be tacked on to this, we don't have anything like that in the foreseeable future. So I'll leave it at that point, maybe that helps.
Right. And Mr. Buxton, do we start with you on this?
Yes, I'll try. So I think the sort of decision point we're at, and what we're trying to sort of get councils feel, is that we can set up the organization as an independent, municipally managed, municipally run. And the conversation then is how can we coordinate those interactions with the others in the affordable housing community? So how would we work with the Seniors Home Society on getting seniors housed, work with them and coordinate on waitlists? How would we work with CEDSCY on supportive housing? How would we work with Squamish Helping Hands? So it becomes an instrumental relationship. That's one way of setting it up. The other way with the umbrella is we have a fundamentally different discussion, is what can we, what organization can be formed with the expertise and assets of the district and the nonprofits? So that we don't have an instrumental relationship between organizations, we have an organization. That's the umbrella concept, is those, the relationships between are eliminated because we form one organization. Now, what that is and how that comes together is, I can't answer that. That's the discussions that we need to have with the nonprofits. But it really is sort of this fork in the road, that do we go it on our own and talk about the relationships we have with others, or do we take the other fork and see what we can form as one entity?
I was going to give some examples of each of those types, so.
Go ahead, Ms. Monk.
Lindsay, well, I wonder if it's worthwhile to go for some of the other material in the that now talks about the relative benefits and drawbacks of those two. I wonder if there's any utility in sort of continuing with the presentation and then seeing where that, where the conversation then leads us.
Okay, counsel, I'll just check in. Does that, okay, I think that's the direction we'd like to go. Ms. Monk, you look like you want to jump in.
Yep, ready to go. Awesome. Okay, so, yeah, as has been said, my name is Lindsay Monk, I'm coming to you from the territory of the Comox First Nations today. It's a beautiful day here in Courtney. And so I think what I kind of wanted to do just really quickly is just take a bit of a poll, because I think we've been throwing out a lot of these terms, particularly when we look at the spectrum as a wheelhouse around different types of housing. Does everyone have, you know, a real solid grasp and understanding of what each of these different housing types mean, or would it be helpful to kind of go through some definitions of what we're talking about when we say, you know, emergency housing, supportive housing, et cetera? Just poll to the group.
I have a preference to just do that, so that it's all clear and we're all on the same page.
The community adheres to.
Sounds good.
We also have the added benefit of the community gets that understanding also.
Perfect, okay. Sounds good. So I guess I'll start with, on the left side of the spectrum, so emergency and transitional housing. So transitional housing is usually housing for up to 30 days. Now, the reality is that most people stay longer than 30 days, but it really is meant to be a transition into longer-term permanent housing. So it's usually, you know, can be a unit within an apartment building, can be within a shared communal space, group home type of facility, but it's really, transition houses is meant to be temporary, between 30 days and a number of years in some cases. Transition houses, it's a little bit different. That's really supposed to be safe housing for women and children fleeing violence, so a safe anonymous place to stay, and it does provide food, support in the form of staff and counseling and services. And it usually comes with no rent associated with that. So that's sort of the difference between transitional and So that's sort of the difference between transitional and transition housing. What else? Supportive housing is really housing that provides onsite supports and services, so it's meant for people who can't live independently, and provides that onsite 24/7 access to supports and services within the building itself. What else did I want to mention? Second-stage housing is usually for women and children fleeing violence who have completed a stay in a transition house or a safe home, so transition house and safe homes, again, do usually try to have some time limit on them. Again, if the women and children are ready to divorce, there is no suitable housing for them to move into, they can't stay for a longer period, but the idea is that they would move into second-stage housing, which again would be more of a shorter-term housing, but on the path towards moving into permanent independent housing. Is there any other definition per se, is there anything else, anyone have any questions about, or any definitions that are swirling around out there that aren't clear?
I think you're good to carry on, thank you.
Okay, awesome, sounds good. Okay, so then I thought I would just give you a few examples of, or I think one example of each I get, of these kind of structures that we've been speaking of. So when we think of the municipal housing corporation option, I think the ones that spring to mind with good reason are the Worcester Housing Authority and perhaps the Capital Regional Housing Corporation in Greater Victoria. Both of those entities really benefited from a wide or a large asset base at their inception or close to, so they were really able to start with a considerable housing stock or very quickly build up that housing stock. But I think there's a recent example that mirrors a lot of the situation in Squamish, which is that the District of Tuffino in, want to say 2016, perhaps 2017, created the Tuffino Housing Corporation. And Tuffino, as you can imagine, faces a lot, not all the same, but a lot of similar challenges to Squamish in terms of that workforce retention, you know, that tourism, all of those pieces, and obviously seeing prices skyrocket similarly to your community. So, yeah, so they created the Tuffino Housing Corporation, who is mandated to provide affordable and attainable housing to Tuffino residents and employees specifically. And basically, the housing corporation is a private corporation and it is owned in full by the District of Tuffino, so the district is the sole shareholder. The Board of Directors is largely made up of mayor and council, although there is some community representation as well as expert representation on the board. And really what the housing corporation's been doing over the last few years is really talking to build up that asset base, so they have a couple of projects under development that was land that was owned by the District of Tuffino, and sort of the only land owned by the District of Tuffino. And it has definitely been, we were involved at an earlier stage, and it has definitely been, you know, a long process to get towards that development, and still not under construction actually, but they are moving through the process. And so, yeah, I think that's really the work that that corporation has been doing, has been to set up that corporation, obviously a significant startup injection had to come from the district to hire staff, to hire bookkeepers, et cetera, and then move through that development process to start to build up that asset base. So I think there's a lot of comparables between what the District of Squamish potentially be looking to do in that example, and I'm happy to answer questions. One of the issues I did want to point out that we did run into with the Tuffino Housing Corporation as we moved through that development process was that we were successful in receiving some funds to move through development, but it was in the form of a forgivable loan. So obviously that, you know, that loan gets forgiven over time, but it does need to be registered against title, against the property, and so what happened in that case is that that debt of that forgivable loan did actually go against the district's, you know, audited financial statements and became a liability to the district, and therefore we actually had to go out to the community and have a referendum on accepting that forgivable loan, even though it was forgivable in that sense. So I think that's just kind of one of the nuances to be aware of as we're considering a corporation that would be looking to build up an asset base, is that there's, you know, all, not insurmountable, all hurdles that can be overcome, but that there are some of these key pieces that we need to be aware of. And then on the flip side of that, another example of what do we mean by this nonprofit umbrella thing? The Comox Valley Coalition to End Homelessness came about because they have a referendum in the Comox Valley between the three regional governments and the electoral areas here to basically ask, were residents willing to have it be taxed and have it go towards affordable housing? And that referendum went through, and so there is an affordable housing tax that is on all property taxes here in the valley. And basically what that does is fund the coalition itself as well as specific affordable housing projects. So the coalition really functions as that umbrella, and then member agencies, and I think there are up to about 25 agencies at this point, and the agencies run the gamut from just housing providers, independent housing providers, to supportive housing, to social services, you know, really runs the gamut in terms of those agencies. And the coalition has an annual expression of interest process for those member agencies that are interested in applying for that funding that's available through that tax. And basically, the coalition has a five-year plan, and so they assess each of the expression of interest responses against how well it's meeting those goals in that five-year plan, and then they basically recommend to the regional district how they think those funds should be spent on a given year. So they funded a warming center for the homelessness shelter here, they funded specific scattered units within specific apartment buildings that developers were putting up, and various things like that. So it really does function as that sort of one-stop-shop in terms of it is the go-to place, I would say, in the valley for if you're searching for housing as well as support, but then it also is able to concretely build up that asset base over time through having access to that funding. So that's just a bit of a quick overview of a couple of examples that have informed our thinking as we were putting this together. So before I go into sort of the bracketing discussion, are there any questions or any discussion we want to have on that?
Councillor Race.
Thank you. So does the Coalition, Comox Valley Coalition, I mean, does it manage units such as we're talking about today that they would receive from developers, for example, or from other sources, and have tenants come and go, or do they have one part of the Coalition that actually does that and they just sort of keep everybody together?
So in this case, the Coalition, like their mandate is specifically around homelessness, so that, no, they don't do that direct management, because that's not sort of what they were set up to do, but I think that that structure absolutely could. So I think it would be a conversation that the Coalition would have with its member agencies as, you know, if a unit came up, right, is that going to be, does it make most sense, you know, does it align most with the mandate of a particular member agency for that unit to be managed by them, and does everybody agree? Or does it make most sense for the Coalition as its own entity to manage that unit? I think it could be done either or both.
Thank you, thanks Chair.
Very good. Carry on Ms Monk.
Okay, sounds good. Matt's just going to pull up the presentation here. So in terms of this sort of fracturing discussion, we've kind of divided it into three areas, there's definitely a lot of overlap between all these questions, and we may start to have a discussion around some of the pieces that, you know, falls under a later question and we'll just go with the flow. So the first set of questions was around governance and organizational structure. Next slide, there we go. So really what we're hoping to get from you, or the discussion we're hoping to have today is really to understand kind of your appetite or where your preferences fall along a spectrum between, you know, kind of each the left or the right side of each of these questions, as well as the priority of each kind of element in relation to each other. So is, you know, is full responsibility more important than any questions around flexibility, as an example here? So, and as we go, I can kind of give some examples of where the different organizations that we've looked at might fit along that spectrum. But, so just to dive right in, in terms of having full responsibility over resources, finances, and policy for an organization versus having much more of a reporting role, so a, you know, a structure that reports back to council on a, you know, annual, semi-annual, what-have-you basis, and district setting policies, but not necessarily having that full responsibility. I guess my question here really is, how interested is the district in being directly involved in, you know, human resources, finances, setting up boards? Or does the district see themselves really setting the direction and then having a reporting and oversight role, perhaps as a member on the board or another mechanism like that?
Okay. Council. Mayor Elliott.
So just to understand the spectrum, on the lighter color on the left, that's the district having full responsibility or the organization having full responsibility?
Well, it's the district in the sense of, if we're setting up a corporation that's wholly owned by the district, the district then is taking on that responsibility, whether that's through hiring an ED or what have you, it's still assuming that responsibility.
Okay, so that's the district's full responsibility on the left?
Correct.
Giving it over to the housing organization would be on the right?
Correct.
Okay. Do you want us to vote on these, or how are we doing this?
I just kind of wanted to get a sense of like where, you know, strong preference for either side, or are you in the middle? Just kind of get a sense of, feel of where you guys are landing.
I'm a three, two and a half maybe on that one.
Any councillors? Where are the rest of you falling on this one? In my view right now, I can see councillor Pettingill, councillor Anderson, councillor Stoner. Anderson, go ahead.
Sir, the delay, yes, I'll agree with the mayor on this one, two and a half sounds very comfortable to me.
Councillor Race, you have your hand up next. Councillor Stoner after councillor Race, please.
Yeah, thank you. It's independent as far as possible, keeping in mind that the district will probably be putting money in, especially in the short term, and we usually require some accountability for that, and they'll be dealing with, I'll call them district assets, these units that we acquire through CACs and so forth, and so we do have an interest in that. So I'm generally on the right side of the spectrum.
Councillor Stoner.
I would fall on the right side of the spectrum.
Councillor Hurford.
I'm also over to the right there, and I think the mayor's maybe two and a half was where I would land.
Councillor Pettingill?
I was at a three.
Okay, you can put me down for a 2.5.
Awesome, okay. So that's great. So then sort of building off of that then, while I completely appreciate that we will need to make sure that there are those sort of levers and points at which the district is able to set direction and make sure that the reporting relationship is adequate, especially if there are district funds in play. In terms of understanding your sort of appetite for decision-making, we've kind of got a frequent need for the district to be making decisions, sort of like day-to-day operational level decisions, versus districts as more of an advisory body. So again, setting that vision and goal and mandate and seeking to see that the organization is meeting those goals and that mandate, but less involved in the day-to-day. And I guess as part of that, you know, does the district see itself sitting on the board? Does the district see staff being involved in the organization? For example, the Capital Regional Housing Corporation is made up of council members from within the Capital Regional District who have different numbers of votes, whereas the Worcester Housing Authority is really community members that are appointed by council. So I guess, yeah, just that there's a lot in there, but to start with, how interested is the district in sort of that frequent decision-making piece?
Mayor Elliott.
I think that we are more of an advisory body, and so our official community plan, the policies we set around our CACs and our perpetual affordable housing policy, I think those are the key policies that we set that drive the mandate of the organization. I think that it would be appropriate to have a member of council or a couple on the board, but I think it should be a board made up of experts, not of politicians, and that's really important to me, that the expertise is there, and then you have council members that sit on the board to provide that strategic and district perspective at the table as well. And I don't see our staff being deeply involved, I imagine this organization has its own staff. I expect that on our side, we have some sort of liaison to this group, that they know who they need to talk to at the district, if there's a deal on the table that requires district input, so I think that's the way I see it.
I saw councillor Race's hand next.
Thank you. And so I'm generally feeling the same way, and I try to think of the structure, saying the district is the sole shareholder of some entity, typically the sole shareholder appoints the board of directors, and so you have that kind of control over operations of this entity. If they sort of go astray, you replace the directors. And we do have, as I said before, I mean, there's going to be district money going into it, probably, and also district assets at play, so I would expect just sort of an oversight. And we have a model for that, actually, in history. The Squamish Oceanfront Development Corporation was set up as an independent corporation with a board of directors who are drawn from the community, and when I was on council, I was the ex-officio member of the board, non-voting, but with the link between the board and council, because just looking at the history of that particular organization, there were times in its history when their activities in council were going off in two different directions and it resulted in some rather spectacular failures. So I think we'd want to avoid that kind of thing. Communication between this and council policy, this entity and council policy is going to be very important, just like it would be for, or was for that last one. So I think you need that link, and having a councillor there, but I'm sort of trying to envision something with independent staff, not using district staff, following policy more or less set out at a higher level by council, but then kind of running their own organization.
Very good, thank you councillor Pettingill, next.
Yeah, I'd probably be more towards three on this one as well, except I wouldn't, the framing of this is a little different than I would put on it, it's not so much an advisory angle that I'd be interested in, it's more sort of a set of deliverables, and that's how the accountability would come, so the district would say, you know, we want, we expect this level of waitlist size, this level of waitlist duration, this average level of housing price to income, and these are deliverables, the objectives, and if you do that, we're good, we don't need to be sort of beyond that, and so it's more the outcome to be focused on.
Thank you councillor Pettingill. Councillor Hurford.
Yeah, I'm over to the three with this one, or at least moving in that direction, knowing that we get this, whatever they can see is up and moving and may need some more check-ins at first, but moving towards that far side there, the three.
Thank you, councillor Anderson.
Thank you. I share councillor Pettingill's concern over the phrasing advisory, I think it needs to be a little bit more nuanced or stronger than that, but I'm definitely over at 2.5, three on this one, but I do think that some of the practical functions are a little bit more than advisory, and we are, as a stakeholder, we will have a need to have, and councillor Race has drawn an example, need to have a little bit stronger description than advisory. Thank you.
Councillor Stoner. Broadly and generally, okay. And I will fall in the 2.5 with echoing the comments of councillor Anderson and councillor Pettingill.
Great. All right, so then the third sort of bracket. All right, so then the third sort of bracket around governance and organizational structure is just understanding, you know, sort of the ability to change change one's mind as the situation evolves. We're certainly learning to do that these days. And sort of how where the district is landing in terms of the organization's ability to be flexible and adaptable to community needs changes versus, you know, having a mandate that is set out by council and, you know, needs to be adhered to. Because I think that the answers to this question will have a lot of impact on how that the structure of the organization is actually set up.
Very good. Who would like to tackle this one first? Counselor Hurford?
Thank you. I don't know about the, I don't like the wording of being rigid, but I do like having focused goals. And I think trying to be too many things, you kind of end up being the master of none. So I think we've identified a portion of the spectrum, and we can debate around which portion that is. But I'd like to see that defined clearly so that our community understands what that is. Now, over time, how that changes as the community's needs change, I think, comes from council direction and not so much. And maybe that's the organization coming to council to ask, you know, highlighting what those, you know, what the changing needs are. But I see some a focus, I'd like to see focus. I don't like the the term rigidity. I prefer sort of that that focus, and then the mechanism for the change would be through council direction is what my my vision is.
Great, thank you, Counselor Hurford. I saw Counselor Race's hand, but Counselor Stoner, did you want to jump in on a point in Counselor, okay, go ahead, Counselor Race?
Thank you. I'm kind of in the middle of the spectrum here, echoing Counselor Hurford's comments. I think I think it would be responsive to community needs, certainly, and also opportunities which can pop up unexpectedly. But it's overall, it will come, the very highest level, I think, will be council direction down to the board. And any well-run organization, I think, should have the ability to pivot as you as you see opportunities and changing needs. So I'm kind of in the middle on that. I think I think almost any corporate structure, whether it's a nonprofit society that's incorporated or or a company, would have the ability to do that, as long as there's a good relationship between council, setting policy on behalf of the community, and the corporation responding to it.
Thank you. Counselor Stoner next, and then Mayor Elliott. Sorry, Counselor Anderson, then Mayor Elliott. Go ahead, Counselor Stoner.
To the chair, thanks. So I fall much further on the left on this one, looking at the three components. I feel like if you have a strong kind of advisory direction and good overarching policy with 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 good reporting lines and monitoring, that there is flexibility that is needed to respond to kind of that community change over time. And I would like to see that kind of built in, that the organization itself is able to adapt, and that that policy and overarching management pieces is in place to allow them to achieve those higher-end goals through whichever mechanisms they see fit at the time to respond to those needs.
Very good. Counselor Anderson, please.
I'm in the middle of the spectrum on this one here, at state number two. I'm thinking ahead to when we may discuss the composition of the the leadership or management and its advisory component, because there's a lot to be adaptable and flexible to. I'm in favor of a broad stakeholder representation with experts, community stakeholders, including people in design and construction, finance and development, even though at one time they're open to participation in these sectors, for the reason that we need to be adaptive and flexible to a changing world. And so looking ahead to the who question, I'm wanting to to make sure that we are recognizing the need for adaptation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Elliott?
Thanks, Chair. I think, you know, to me, if an organization has a a strong vision and mission, a set of really good values, and a and a body of policy work that's established by the district, then there's flexibility within within that. I agree with Counselor Hurford, you can't be everything to everyone. You know, the idea that there's a three- or five-year plan, that that it's a focused effort, it's not just whatever comes along, it's understanding the census data and how our community is growing and and which part of the spectrum we need to focus on at any given time, I think, is important. So so those high-level pieces are really important to me. I'm a little bit worried about my fellow councilors' use of the word districts control over. I see this really as an arms-length organization that is governed by a body of experts in housing and development and and community services, that it actually should be non-political. I would actually see this body informing councils, thinking about new policy direction or how we need to evolve. So I'm not sure where that lands, but I don't like the sense of that we would control this organization, and it could be subject to politicization. It should be like outside of that realm. It should be governed at arms-length. And I just want us to keep that in mind. Housing should be outside of politics if we're taking a housing-first approach.
Counselor Penningill, I believe we're yet to hear from you on this one, correct?
Yeah, I'm still thinking this one through. I guess, you know, the one thought I have is as long as we are a primary funder, we'll ultimately have a high level of control, whether or not it's our intent or not. And and so I guess maybe that implies, if we do think there should be truly arms-length and independence, you know, as CACs come through, maybe an additional piece of that is that we transfer all the lease, you know, the head lease stuff over to this entity, and so we are divesting ourselves of any financial interest that we put into it fully. I don't fully have form whether or not that's a good idea. You know, I do think that whatever control we do have should be at the very highest sort of most broad level in terms of sort of broad policy, maybe some objectives, but definitely not in terms of operational stuff and even not-for-profit versus corporation. I almost would like something that can make those decisions on its own, whatever is most effective, to deliver the things we want, which I think is sort of easier access, more affordable access to housing and sort of, those are the pieces I want to showcase, that housing becomes easier, maybe for this population more than others. Maybe we want to get into that, or maybe not, but yeah, probably more on the flexible side.
Thank you, Counselor Penningill. And for me, I I fall into the two category, and we'll highlight some of the other words that I've heard from other councilors. Definitely, I envision experts being involved. I don't see council as as being the experts in any of this stuff. And we, council wouldn't potentially be constructive to try and be those experts. Counselor Anderson highlighted expertise in design, architect. I think that's important consideration as well. So solidly two for me.
Okay, great, thanks, everyone. Yeah, lots of good discussion here. I feel like we are definitely getting a better sense of where you're you're falling in terms of how much involvement the district sees itself having, and sort of some of these pieces about how to set up the structure. So with that, I want to move into a little bit more granular detail on some of these questions that that we have. So here we're looking at more at sort of finance and resources, so how is how is this thing going to happen? So, you know, on the left side, we've got mineral direct resources are required, recognizing that, that, you know, at least at the outset, I think, all the options we're talking about require some initial startup cash or resources. And then on the right-hand side, we've got more significant direct to district resources are required. So here we're thinking specifically things like, you know, hiring staff, will the staff already exist, or will staff need to be hired directly? Who, you know, I think we're very focused to the fact that likely district staff would not be, you know, the staff running the actual organization. And so therefore, there would be a board of some kind, either set up with by council or with council representation on it. So I wanted I wanted to talk about how you see the staffing component happening, as well as sort of that startup capital coming from. Is the district open to a tax levy, sort of what we described in the Comox Valley example? Is the district open to, you know, providing a one-time or, you know, some sort of five-year flat fee to to get the organization off the ground? And sort of where do you see, both in terms of that startup and ongoing district resources in terms of time and and actual cash coming in?
Okay, thank you. Who's breaking the ice on this one? Counselor Race?
Thanks. I don't think there's any question that we'll be putting some money in to kind of get the thing up and running. And that initially, I'm getting too far into it, is probably staff. I can't imagine anybody in the district right now who has the time in their hands to get this thing up and running. And so I'm I'm thinking that there's a new person out there somewhere, a new position. And I think, you know, over time, I mean, I have a preference for for going into the corporate move for for a number of reasons, but but I think over time, that can become possibly self-funding. But initially, I think we're going to do it ourselves, and I don't see the need for a special tax or levy. I think we just budget for it and and it's spread along our tax base that way. So there's really no special need to to go out there and add another line item to the to the tax notice.
Thank you. Who's next? Don't all jump at once. Mayor Elliott?
Well, I think I said this earlier, there's probably a liaison role at the district, but it's it's probably some heavy lifting during the startup phase, and then we start to step back, and we figure out the most efficient way to support the housing organization in terms of minimal staffing. We're just talking about the first one, aren't we?
Yes.
Yeah.
Staffing and resource. I'll go next to Counselor Anderson.
I'd like to set a goal of moving towards the left side of that spectrum, but I think it's inevitable that we'd be starting closer to the right, and that should be acceptable and planned for. But I think that we should set a Swiss goal, that we we would like to move towards a a left direct district resources being involved. But at the start, I think we need to be practical and basic and do so with our electorate.
Counselor Stoner?
Thank you. I have a question for Ms. Monk in terms of other experience from other models. If we don't move in the direction of an actual corporation that could potentially become financially viable and self-sufficient in the long term, are we seeing any of these kind of umbrella models become significantly financially self-sufficient? Or are they all kind of dependent on that tax base from municipalities?
Yeah, so the Comox Valley example that I spoke to, it definitely does rely, I would say, on that tax levy. There's other organizations that we that we've looked at, other coalition groups, where no, they do a combination of of grant writing as well as that developing of that own asset base, that again takes takes a long time, are able to move towards more of that self-sufficiency. I would definitely, I would definitely plan, I think actually in either case, for at least needing to like pay for an FTE, right, at the very least, for a period of time. Because I think in either either structure, just will require a significant amount of time to be able to to build up anything that that could pay for that person's time reliably.
Yeah, so I think from my perspective, I think realistically, if this is either way, whichever model we look we look at, but I think there's no doubt that we're on the far right of the spectrum for the foreseeable future. And then my question, my long-term question to that would just be, how do we ensure that that is, that funding is available and there's a property, it's like a line item as a property, new property tax, become more stable over time as opposed to annual budget discussions from different councils in four years? I'm not sure which one is more stable.
Counselor Stoner, are you looking for a response to that, or is that just putting it out there?
Not specifically, just putting that out there, unless somebody does have.
Yeah, I can, I mean, the the requisition, the annual requisition would would, of course, be more stable than than annual than annual requisition. But I say, we're a long ways from having to having to decide things like that.
I have Counselor Penningill next, and then Counselor Race.
Thank you. So I see, you know, I'm sort of dividing this, and maybe I'm misunderstanding the terms of it, but, you know, in terms of assets, us putting resources in, CACs into housing, whether or not it's in those corporations specifically, is maybe a secondary discussion, but definitely those sorts of resources into housing. But but I do support also some sort of tax levy or something, funding to go towards this. And I believe a side effect of that will be to help moderate the prices of the housing that is not in this pool. You know, it's a bit of a redistribution, I would say, in a positive way, and I would support both.
Counselor Race?
Thank you. And just raise, the conversation raised the question, where would this entity that we're talking about get its money from over time? And so, for example, I recall a discussion we had, and I think we settled on the advice that it would take about 100 units under management for this thing to sort of get to the point which justifies having a separate organization, and in the meantime, we go with see the sky. So there's a certain kind of critical mass that we get to. But then from that point on, where did that, does that organization get its money? In other words, does the head lease, for example, or the property management agreement and the bylaws and the housing agreement provide for a management fee for this organization managing the the tenancies and so forth on behalf of the investor? Because these units, keep in mind, you know, in your standard townhouse development or condo development, we end up having covenants placed against half a dozen units, which, and those units will be owned by one or several investors, who will pay a lesser price for them because they're going to have less revenue, and will just sit back there and sort of reap the benefits of their investment. But do we charge a fee, and so how much, and is that enough? And is that where we get our money from over time to the point where we have start putting in less and less district funding? And I just wonder if somebody can just refresh my memory on what that side of it is.
Yeah, get out of this mask.
Oh, yes, we can certainly anticipate that that we'll be looking at management fees, provided that the rents remain affordable. But again, we're a long way from having those sorts of details.
Yeah, I mean, just in terms of that critical mass that you spoke to, Counselor Race, I mean, in our conversations with some of the larger nonprofits, from their perspective, it's it's it might be even closer to 250 units before you really start to see, you know, those large-scale efficiencies coming through and that you're able to charge a a management fee that, you know, allows for the, you know, the type of property or management, the work that we're talking about that that an organization could need. So, yeah, I think definitely it requires that critical mass of units, you know, maybe that that number shifts depending on the the context and the municipality. But certainly the expectation, and I would have to review the head lease to see what provisions are in there, but certainly my expectation would be that, you know, a robust operating budget does allow for, you know, beginning to build up those per unit per month charges that that really do go towards good stewardship of the asset. Yeah.
Counselor Race, is that good for you? Is there anything for you to add? Okay, very good. Counselor Hurford, I believe we're yet to hear from you on this one.
Thank you. I was just reeling from that 250-unit number. So, and So, um, and it makes, makes me think that I, I would like to, um, have an understanding of at least where we aspire to hit the threshold, somewhere apparently between 100 and 250, where it becomes self-funding, um, or, or more, um, viable as a standalone from a fiscal sense. And sort of what that timeframe is, because if we're looking at bridging, you know, what's going to be a five-year commitment to get this thing up and running, I think it's a different discussion than maybe 15 years to hit a 250 units, uh, number. So I'm, and then what the appropriate time to actually, um, you know, set this in, in motion is, given that, how far we want to bridge, bridge that gap. So I'm, I'm not quite sure where, where I'm at yet, cause I, I feel like I'm missing some, some pieces, um, so far. But I would like to get to that self-funding. I'm just, I am concerned about the, um, about the distance to get there and, and, uh, yeah, I just need to hear more.
Very good. Uh, and, um, for my own thoughts, I, I think the practical reality is that we start somewhere right of center on this one. And I would like to see us move as quickly and aggressively as possible to the left and I do not support any special taxation, um, in this realm. Mr. Buxton, were you, uh, do you have thoughts to add?
There was just, in terms of the, the threshold of, of avail, of, of units getting to that 150 or 250, um, with CAC units, it might take some time to get there, but there are already those units in the community. That critical mass already exists. So it depends how you get there.
Yep. Good point.
Very good. Counsel, anything else on this one before we move on? Counselor Penningill.
Well, yeah, I just want to raise, and I, I touched on it a bit, but it, it strikes me that, you know, even if we do a fantastic job on some sort of housing organization, it's only going to address a piece of the affordability. And knowing where we live and so on, we're going to have much bigger affordability challenges. And, and I understand, you know, people are very resistant to fees and taxes and so on, but it seems to me if we don't somehow tie the whole housing market into affordability and connect it all, um, we'll have sort of runaway unaffordability on, on the rest of the housing, which will be the, the largest set of it. So somehow it seems to me we need to tie it all together. And so, um, we are, are managing that affordability across the board. And I would rather see the, the degree that money is leaving people's pockets, that it's going into the community rather than landholders and developers and so on.
Okay, Counselor Race, then Mayor Elliott and Counselor Herford will follow.
Thank you. And to Mr. Buxton, I was just wondering which units you're talking about that are already in the community? Are we talking about things that are like under one roof or helping hands or senior center or things of that nature or? Yeah. And, and would we ever, I mean, are we going to be contemplating an entity that would manage those units for those people? Um, because I think what we're talking about is revenue from units that we, or this entity, uh, would manage. And, and would we ever be in a position to manage those units? Would we take over the management of the senior center, for example? Would they want us to do that? Um, or are we talking about units really that we just get through CACs or some other mechanism?
It would be both, but just, that was just in terms of an umbrella organization that amalgamates those, those individual entities, has that critical mass already.
So that assumes that, that, um, that these entities would want to do that, to toss in, and we thought that we could somehow manage them.
The umbrella could manage them.
Yeah. So the umbrella organization that we'd be a part of, uh, would have to have the expertise to manage the different aspects of those units as well. That's the social side of it, if you like, so.
The community, it already exists with those organizations.
Okay.
Mayor Elliott, I had you next.
Yeah, I'm going to pass. I think I would have just gotten into a debate with Counselor Penningill and we don't need that right now, so.
Okay, and Counselor Herford, I saw your hand.
Um, my question's answered with Counselor Race to find a questioning. Thank you.
Very good. So we can move on? Ms. Monk, please. It, you, just, uh, before you jump into the next one, um, I'll point out that it's 11:23. We will be breaking at noon. Are we on track for that timing?
Mostly, I'm, I think I'm going to speed through the next couple ones, but mostly on.
Carry on.
Okay, thanks. Um, okay, so the next question, I don't actually think we need a ton of, of debate around per se. I think we really were just trying to highlight here, you know, a key risk, I guess, of that more corporate structure is really that, is, is, you know, a district-owned entity, um, of which the district is the sole shareholder, that the district is assuming that risk around debt. Um, and that does have implications for the overall borrowing ability, um, of the municipality. Again, not a, um, insurmountable hurdle, but I, I did just want to highlight it then. So, um, if everyone's okay, I will, um, skip to the, the last, um, item on the, on this slide. Is that all right?
Yeah, let's just check in, everybody is okay. I'm not seeing any hands. I don't see any protests. Please carry on. Wait, I do have Counselor Race's hand showing.
Thank you. Just, just on that point, um, part that would add to the, the district debt calculation, um, my understanding is the amount that might be due in a given year. Cause we went through this with SODC again. And so, um, if we're talking about, if we, for example, had a mortgage, um, on Buckley Avenue, um, that would have added to our, um, debt and our, would calculate into our ability to take on more debt. And so we don't have a personal covenant there. We don't have the, uh, the covenant for the district, so I don't think it does. But I, when I look at this thing, if we're just in a management role with the way some of these units are coming to us through CACs and, and really we're just, to, right now through Cedar Sky Community Services, we're just managing, uh, tenants coming and going or will be. Uh, that by itself, I don't think will really impact our borrowing power very much. Uh, it would be if we took on something like another Buckley Avenue ourselves and mortgage that as opposed to going through BC Housing and the district had to sign the covenant, uh, on the mortgage. Or if we went into, um, a construction project, uh, because we wanted to have ownership units, we could turn around and sell to people, that, uh, would typically be a district debt. And so that, that kind of stuff is the stuff I think would impact our borrowing power, but just the, the operation sort of as we see it in the near term, um, I'm not sure it does unless you have other information.
Well, I guess my thinking here is that the other husband corporations that I'm aware of, like they do directly borrow, right? So they are signing the mortgage agreements, they are the other party to the covenant, all of those pieces. Um, so they're directly, they are the direct developer and manager of those housing assets. Um, and so if that, that is, I mean, I'm sorry we're having this discussion now, because that is, that is not something that the district has appetite for, even while creating the corporation. I think that does change to a fair extent, um, the, that corporation itself and the, uh, sort of extent to which it's, uh, active.
If I might just respond to that, I, I think it's, it's the point where the district becomes liable for the debt, uh, that it starts to affect our borrowing calculations. Um, and if we don't sign the mortgage as a guarantor, um, then we wouldn't. Uh, if this other organization, you know, housing corporation, for example, signed the mortgage, uh, and the district did not have to guarantee it, uh, I think we're okay. And that's what happened in Buckley Avenue, from my recollection. BC Housing did not require the district to sign on with the promise to pay covenant, which is standard in a mortgage. And so it doesn't, the Buckley Avenue financing, for example, is not affecting borrowing calculations. So it is, it is quite critically a matter of how the debt is set up. And, and if the district is required to guarantee the mortgage, then I think, um, in those circumstances, yes, it would. And the amount that it affects is not the whole mortgage. You know, we borrow $25 million for a housing project. It's the amount that comes due on a per-year basis, the principal and interest per year. It calculates, it falls into that calculation. And we went through that with SODC and, and the problem there is there was a balloon payment, uh, in one year that was required, you know, threw the whole thing out of whack. So, uh, so anyway, there's a number of different aspects to that, but I think they are manageable. And we at the moment have a lot of capacity, uh, to borrow and this may be one of the, one of the things that we would want to use some of that capacity for.
Great, thanks. Yeah, so I think, I mean, I think really it comes down to whether the corporation is, is sort of part of the municipality, right? As, as wholly owned by the municipality or whether it is, um, its own entity and set up, set up completely separately. So that'll be a key, a key piece to work through. Um, just in the interest of time, um, I'm going to ask Matt to just move to the next slide, cause I think our last question comes out, um, in the next slide. Um, so here we're really looking at community assets and sort of ease of implementing as an organization.
Wait, Ms. Monk?
My first.
Sorry, I just need to pause you. Um, Mayor Elliott, Mayor Elliott, uh, has a thought following Counselor Race's comments.
Okay, sorry, my bad.
Thanks, and just, I'll just be quick, but we have a really aggressive real estate and facilities master plan that will affect our debt load over the next 20, 40 years. A long time. And so we do have to be careful and, and that's why I think the more arms-length that we can. I, I don't want to hamstring this organization, so it's not to say that we wouldn't take on some debt in the short term to help if we need to get it off the ground. But we actually need a lot of room just to take care of all the facilities that we have, um, that belong to the district that we need to upgrade, um, as well as, uh, our diking infrastructure and capital, other capital projects. So I think we do have to be a bit cautious here, um, and, and find that, that right balance to give us the freedom to do what we need to do and not hamstring that organization unnecessarily at the beginning. That's all I wanted to say.
Very good. Thank you. Carry on, Ms. Monk.
Thanks, sorry, sorry about that. Um, okay, so yeah, the last set of questions is around the community assets, um, working within the community and then ease of implementation of an organization. Um, so the first question is really around whether the district, through the corporation, um, is interested in having that direct relationship through the organization with tenants, right? So, um, obviously the district would want to be setting policy decisions around eligibility for tenancy, um, and that's kind of that vision piece that we're, we can look to refine. Um, but in terms of actually, you know, actually having that property management relationship through the organization, um, just sort of curious where, where folks are landing on that spectrum.
Okay, so first of all, Counselor, are you all clear on what we're being asked with this one? I'm going to assume yes. Can we go back to the global view so I can see everybody? All right. Who has a thought on this one? Counselor Race.
I'm a solid three.
That's it? Okay, Counselor Stoner.
We're trying to be quick here. Uh, I, I very much appreciate the, the mayor's previous comments about this being an arms-length organization. I think that that's going to require partnerships. We have a lot of these, uh, resources and expertise in our community already. And so I think across all cities, I'm on the far right-hand side of the spectrum.
Very good, thank you. Mayor Elliott.
Um, I'm a three and a three, and I want to hear a little bit more about the last one before I give you a number on that one.
By the last one, you mean that last sliding bar?
Yep.
Uh, is that your hand, Counselor Stoner? No. Counselor Anderson, please.
I'm good with three, three. And, um, I'll hold back to, to further discussion on the last one.
Counselor Herford?
Yeah, I would like to come back if there's opportunity, sorry Chair, if there's opportunity to touch on the last item of, of item two, although I believe there'd be, it's a topic for the point of, you know, what makes, uh, there will be opportunities at any rate, but we, it'd be a time, thank you.
Counselor Herford?
I feel like we're near consensus on, on this one. I'm a three, three.
And Counselor Penningill?
Uh, probably a three, two, and three.
Very good. And I'm three, two, and three with looking for more on that, that last sliding bar.
Okay, great. So, um, thanks everyone, I appreciate, um, sort of the bundling of responses. Um, I guess what, really what I'm trying to get at with that second one, just to come back up for a quick second, is just around, um, you know, how important is actually owning the asset, um, to the district, right? So on that left-hand side, you know, really working to develop units through CAC, but perhaps through, through, you know, developments, um, as well. So, so, um, in, not necessarily through the CAC unit policy, but also just development by an organization as well versus, um, leveraging existing access, assets that are existing in the community and working with sector partners to develop, uh, units, be it through a CAC, um, or through development. Um, I guess how, how important is that ownership piece to you? And do, I guess, do the threes still stand?
Mayor Elliott?
Um, I think I want to do whatever makes this organization more viable, um, sooner. And so also we don't have a lot of land of our own to put into this, um, which makes that a little bit of a moot point. We're land poor in terms of, of providing the right spots for the kinds of housing we're talking about. So it's, I'd, I'd rather leverage the things that already exist in the community and put it into an organization. And then we have our own real estate, uh, strategy over time that, you know, if we acquire land, we can always choose to own it, but put it into this mix, um, at that time. But, um, yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm not too concerned about the ownership. I think putting the assets into this umbrella organization is important.
Counselor Race.
Thank you. And when I gave my answer the last time, I was only thinking of the first bar. Uh, on the second one, I'm in the middle because I think we'd want to, um, get them where they come from. And I would hope the organization would also be, uh, working as well as just the district leveraging its own assets. So there's a, I can see a whole bunch of different scenarios in the future with large developments coming on, uh, where there might be opportunities. But, um, so I'm in the middle on the second bar. And the third one, I need a little explanation. I'm not exactly sure if that talks about so.
That's for clarification.
Okay, so Counselor Stoner and, and then we'll seek more clarification on the third bar.
Yeah, I think, uh, my solid three, I think still holds from the mayor's comment that we don't really have much land necessarily to put forward to this. I think that doesn't stop us from, where possible, adding to mix. But even when we do negotiate things like CACs through developers, they aren't coming to the district, that ownership piece isn't there. Um, we can encourage them to go through the housing authority, but I think that even being for me on the solid side of the right, um, that it still means that we will do everything that we can through our CAC policies and others to encourage as many units to come into this, uh, entity as possible.
Okay.
The ownership piece is hugely concerning to me.
Great. Before we move on, Counselor Penningill?
Yeah, just want to clarify, cause I said I was a two on the middle of bar, but I, I'm not concerned about ownership. I want to sort of maximize the acceptability of affordable housing over the long term. Whatever does that, we should do it and ownership is besides the point. It, maybe it's best way, maybe it's not, it's not a priority.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Monk.
Okay, great, thanks everyone. Um, okay, but just to explain a little bit about that third piece, um, so really our thinking here is, um, how easy an organization is to set up, right? So if, um, if the, the direction was more around setting up a municipal housing corporation, that's really a legal process that the district could undertake at any time, um, you know, get Gary on it and he'll make it happen, right? Uh, even though we'd have to figure out a lot of the details, in terms of actually just setting that direction and being able to have some concrete next steps, it's a much more clear path, I guess. Um, whereas if we're talking about more of this coalition umbrella structure, it does require a community partnership and buy-in, I think, from your existing nonprofit. Um, it isn't sort of a unilateral, uh, process that the district can, can sort of decide to undertake. It would really be about, uh, having those conversations and it's people, so it's messy. But, you know, it really is that sort of consensus building and that working with your existing partners. Um, and so here we're, we are thinking specifically of Cedar Sky, um, Housewives Women, Squawish Seniors and Helping Hands. Um, but you know, the Squawish Nation has a new housing authority that has recently got. recently got off the ground. And so, and I'm sure that there are other community partners that we would want to, to have these conversations with. So I think, yeah, and here we're just trying to get at, how important is it to you to, to be able to chart that clear path forward and sort of easily actionable, recognizing that, that may have some impact, right, on those relationships and, you know, in terms of the work that the community organizations are already doing, and sort of, you would have to manage that, that relationship side of things in terms of, of any, you know, duplication of efforts that already exist. And then on the far other side of the equation, it's more around, it's managing the partnership, but more about how do we want to work together collaboratively, but less of a clear, clear path forward. Because I think those conversations would, would alter the structure as, you know, they would need to, so.
Okay, team, bar number three. Mayor Elliott?
Thank you. Well, I think if we move to the left, we could do this quickly. I think we've, we're learning so much through the pandemic about where communities are vulnerable and who suffers because of that. And so I think it's important to take the time to talk with our not-for-profit housing providers and see if there's a collaborative way forward. I, I think that has the potential to make everyone stronger, and also fill in some of the gaps that have been exposed because of the pandemic, and I think would make our community more resilient. So it could be messier, but sometimes I think what we get is, is a stronger end product in the end. So I, I guess I would sway more towards the side of three with a well-facilitated process to, and put a timeline around it. So it's not just an open-ended conversation forever and ever, but like, let's get to a decision by this date. And if we can't find a collaborative way forward, then we can choose to swing back to the left. But I think, you know, putting in a process, having a timeline, and making a decision by a certain date would be helpful with community partners.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything they want to add to that? Counselor Race?
Thank you. So I'm right in the middle of this. So after listening to the conversation, I am sort of leaning towards setting up a corporation under the Business Corporations Act as opposed to a society. It has to be a legal entity, otherwise it couldn't even have a bank account. So you need something, you can't have a bank account in the name of nothing. So there has to be some kind of legal entity before you can have a bank account, whether it's an individual, or a partnership, or something like that. And I think a company is the better model. It's also the better, better model for banking, and it's also the better model if you're going to hopefully aspire to earning a profit one day. And I'm saying this, and you don't know me, but I used to be a lawyer, and I dealt with nonprofits and profits, and so it's just maybe it's that bias. And that's relatively easy to set up. But in listening to the conversation, you know, I think there's two almost distinct functions for this entity. And one is managing these units that we might get through CACs, which are rental units with criteria around who might occupy them, income levels, et cetera. And the second function is this, for lack of a better word, this coalition model, where we bring in communication at the very least with the other nonprofits that are also providing other forms of housing. And we've mentioned the four of them, and there may be others that pop up over time. And that's kind of the umbrella organization, and that's sort of the, you know, we can't ignore each other. We don't want to silo this thing. We want to communicate with them. But whether we, as the district entity, want to take on the actual management of those types of units, I question that. And so that's why I think if we focus on, and our mandate, which is these ones which are, for lack of a better word, I'll call the economic units, low rent, et cetera, focus on those ones that we get through CACs, and let the other organizations deal with the units they get, which is typically through other types of funding, but somehow have a communication facility with them. Whether we are part of a coalition, our, our company would be part of a coalition, or whether there's some other model. But, but I sort of see two different, different roles here that I think are, to some extent, distinct.
Counselor Anderson? Yes, Counselor Anderson, you're good? Counselor Penningill?
Yeah, a couple of thoughts. I mean, I think somewhat agreeing with Counselor Race, it seems to me there is value in an umbrella of some sort, whether or not that needs to be, I guess, it seems that I would consider us going into that role if we were the only one willing to take it on, because it does seem like there's value there. But it is maybe separate from the piece of, do we have CACs and things that we could bring to a table, and that piece is probably important to, wherever we go, I think I lean a bit more towards community partnership. And then the one comment that was mentioned that reminded me of something I had in my notes, you know, I believe Squamish Nation has access to some land and assets. They have started a housing corporation. We are an unceded territory, and we haven't had that discussion too much yet. But I also wonder, you know, is another path forward where we, we provide some staff resources, one or two people, but really it is Squamish Nation that is going to lead on whatever this thing is, because they have a lot they could bring to the table, too. And so maybe we, we can help get the ball rolling, but maybe we aren't the primary animals. And that's, I guess, more of a question than a statement.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else before we, Mayor Elliott?
Just another thought. I think when we think about the wheelhouse of, of housing, and who would be at the table for these conversations about whether we can create this umbrella organization, is who's at the table that has the expertise during this conversation that can build that missing middle housing, and also speak to affordable home ownership? So if we engage with a not-for-profit community through the fall around this discussion, they can speak to emergency housing, and supportive housing, and independent, but supported housing, or subsidized housing. But who would be at the table to speak to the rest of that, that wheelhouse of housing, so that it fits in, too? Because we don't want to miss out on the homes that, you know, new teachers need, and new firefighters, and ambulance drivers, and nurses need. Those have to be built, too. But that's not what this group of not-for-profits have necessarily been building, aside from maybe a few units that CitiSky has. So I guess that's a question. So how do we make sure those voices are represented in this conversation, so that any umbrella we create contemplates the whole of the wheelhouse, not just the, the bottom portions of it?
Mr. Buxton?
And I think that's our role as the district in informing this organization or the umbrella, is that's the portion of the, of the wheel that we bring to the, we need to bring to the table. But that, I think, is our role.
But my point, Mr. Buxton, is that I think it needs to be part of the consultation in the fall. We can't have this sort of isolated conversation about one end of, of the housing spectrum, and not understand how then it would fit into how you, how you build the, the missing middle part as well. So I'm just, I think we should think about who could join the conversation to understand the needs from the not-for-profit sector, and one aspect of the, the safe housing supply, and then look at the missing parts all the way up to homeownership.
Ms. Monk, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, and I think that, I think that partly, you know, naming the, the four nonprofits is really being driven by the, the initial vision, right, so that we're at saying low to moderate income, and so less contemplating more of that missing middle or affordable homeownership piece. But certainly, I think definitely there are groups that we could, we could rely on and invite possibly, you know, if it was appropriate, to do a consultative process. So, you know, your habitats, community land trust, all those pieces. I think definitely that expertise is available, and so whether that's through an earlier consultation, sort of before the nonprofit table, or whether they are actually invited to that table, I think we would have to have further discussion on. But yeah, I think, I think you're right. If the vision of the Squamish Housing Organization is going to expand beyond that low to moderate income level, then we do need to make sure we're, we're consulting more broadly, yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Counselor Stoner, we're, we're coming up to 10 minutes remaining, so I'm conscious of time. Go ahead, Counselor Stoner.
Yeah, I'll just voice my support for that. And I do think that some of that outreach and consultation needs to happen in advance of that table, and I personally would like to see that table expanded to beyond just the nonprofits. Because I do think if it is going to become an umbrella organization, then those voices need to be at the table early and, and often, so that we can structure it in a way that, that it'll hear all of those voices as we develop what that looks like.
Thank you. I think we're back to you now, Ms. Monk.
Okay, great. Well, thanks, everybody. This has been a really useful conversation. We were going to take a break, but I think we will forego that and move into more of a, a bit of a wrap-up and summary of what we think we've heard, that we've been frantically doing in the background here. So I'll just make sure that, that Matt's ready. Matt, are you ready? There we go. And I'll let Katie kind of lead the, this wrap-up.
All right, so thanks so much for that fulsome conversation. So based on what we've heard, these are sort of our summarizing points. So some of the key pieces of your conversation really revolved around that this organization can't be everything to everyone, and communication was a key part of it. That was a theme that came up a number of times from the beginning of the conversation all the way through to sort of those last points. The organization should be non-political, and use the community resources and experts. That was another point that came through. You're quite aware of sort of the resources and experts that exist in the community, and that those people need to be involved throughout this process. The district needed to be a part of the board, but not fully the board. We also heard that the district would be, would financially support the initial development of this organization, including supporting the creation essentially of an FTE. And then, well, later on, there's a note that says self-sufficiency is a long-term goal of this organization. Debt load planning was a sort of key item that we picked up on, that that debt load planning piece from the district needs to be, to be considered, both from this housing end and those future civic facility upgrades in the community. That communication is a key item comes up again, leveraging those existing relationships, resources, and assets in the community is really, it sounds like vital to the success of the organization. We, we wholeheartedly agree with that. The organization needs to work with the existing nonprofit sector and the community closely. Another key point, accessibility of affordable units being the long-term priority of council, and that sort of came through as an above-all priority item. And then a last sort of thought that, that sort of snuck in was the value of that on-the-ground community experience coming through in those conversations with the nonprofit sector. So from here, we'll take all of this information, we've been taking notes throughout this entire piece, and we'll provide a summary report that sort of makes some recommendations. And then that district directional report will come to you later this summer, and then move forward into some sort of nonprofit housing table. And we'll have some discussions with Gary on how this discussion will inform that roundtable with, with the nonprofit sector and/or some other community stakeholders based on this discussion.
Thanks, Katie. I'll just, I'll just add a couple of final points. One point, two points around the, almost the vision part of the, the discussion here, one of which is we need to consider the entire housing spectrum, particularly the missing middle, and make sure that that's represented in the, in the, in the discussion table. We may need to revisit who's at that table. The ability to move through the spectrum or around the wheel for people as part of this discussion is part of the organization. And one other critical point that I, that I made was that the, that the influence or control on the organization through strategy, policy, or deleverage, rather than, than through a governance structure. So those things as well, I think, we're okay to get a little messy, as long as we have a strict timeline for closing on these discussions. I think with that, Katie, I think, yeah, you've noted, we will get a report summarizing this back to council for them, and then we're going to proceed with the, the table discussions through the late summer before.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, very good. I'm just going to check in with Counsel. Is there anything missing for anybody? Great, love it when that happens. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I want to refer to the finance and resources section. The third item creates new resources or doesn't create new resources. I suggest that, that is the case, that we have some underdeveloped resources in the community in providing housing, mainly within the construction industry. We've identified in our economic development strategy this as an opportunity to build a, an industry that can respond to markets with new offerings in new ways, not only for export, but for the local situation. And we have several companies that are on the edges of providing and want to be providing housing solutions, construction and design solutions for the sectors we're talking about. So that new resources can come in the form of the construction industry, that can be in partners in new ways. This is highlighted and identified as a target to focus on in our economic development strategies, this discussion approved recently. And I just wanted to highlight that as part of the new resources that could be brought into the picture. We often, when we talk about affordable housing, we talk about programs, we talk about money, but there's also technology and the actual practical building of these units. And there's a whole world of improvement that we can look to, and that is an opportunity and can be considered resources. I wanted to make one other point, and that has already been brought up in passing by Counselor Penningill, and that is the Squamish House, the Squamish Nation. As, as already been mentioned, they have a new housing authority and lots of new ambitious plans, well, not new ambitious plans, but ambitious plans that they have discussed at some level with our council. And during the 2011 to 2016 period, when we had an active community house, affordable housing working group, they were very active partners throughout, represented by the Squamish Valley Operations, Christine Baker, heading up, and they are very interested in off-reserved housing. Half the membership of the Squamish Nation community lives off-reserved. So I just wanted to make those two points in passing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. And I'll just take a moment to acknowledge what I think was a really effective process here this morning. So thank you very much to the group at McCullough. My, my feedback on what you've taken us through today is that I'd like for all of our processes to go this way. It was very smooth, it was very well-organized, very well-handled. So, Mr. Buxton, you included in your team, thank you very much for making this, in my opinion, easy for council, and producing results. And I believe the outcome is what you were looking for, and you're leaving us today with what's required to move us forward. So, Mr. Buxton, unless there's anything else from you?
Not from my part, Katie. I don't think we've got anything. I think we're good. I think we've got exactly what we needed. Thank you very much to council, and we are on time.
In fact, ahead of schedule. Mayor Elliott?
I'm going to throw us off time. No, I just was, I might have missed this, Mr. Buxton, but will we see this summary report before you go out to consultation in the fall? So we'll see. Okay, thanks. All right, now you can.
Great. So we are now ready to recess, and we will take a full hour for lunch. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe when council returns, we will be using the BlueJeans system as we're going to an in-camera session. Got that, council? So, thank you, everybody. We will return at 1:00 PM. Okay, welcome back to Committee of the Whole. And next on our agenda is the public art policy. And Ms. Dicker, I believe you have a presentation for us, yes? I see you speaking, but I don't hear you. I see you speaking, but I don't hear you.
Yes, I do have a presentation. Just waiting to get past the torch.
Okay. We're working on that for you.
Thank you. Okay. I am presenter now. Okay. Let's do it. Do you see the presentation?
Yes.
In full screen?
It's not, um, full though. It's in pres- in preview mode for us.
Hang on.
There we go. That's better.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, council, um, for your time today. My name is Sarah Dicker, and I am the manager of Arts and Culture for the District of Quamish. I'm joined today by Devin Gass, the Director of Recreation, and also by Natasha Goldbeck, General Manager of Community Services. And today we are here to present the Public Art Policy Outline for initial review and feedback prior to approval. So the objective of today's presentation is to gain council feedback on the public art policies prior to seeking approval next week on July 21st. And so the background, we are going to cover the background, major policy changes, the procurement, uh, process change, the funding mechanism for public art, as well as roles and public art on private property. And we'll then have some time for questions. So the background of the, of this policy, um, is that the public art policy was established in 2014 by the previous council. And that policy established a select committee, which is now expired. Uh, and we now have an emergence of a new model where the public art portfolio will be managed by an external third party. Uh, the policy was reviewed and, um, coincided with the art culture and heritage strategy. And so it was put on hold, uh, for that policy review to come forward alongside, um, the draft art culture and heritage strategy as an early outcome. So the introduction of the, the major changes to the policy includes the introduction of a public art advisor. The public art advisor will provide subject matter expertise and depoliticizes the selection of artwork for the district as well. The public art program will be a structured annual art program, which provides consistency for the art community. And the district will move to an arms-length relationship, um, as, with a staff liaison to the public art advisor. And staff can then work towards implementing the outcomes of the art culture inherited strategy. The Public Art Provision Fund is new to this policy, um, currently, or sorry, previously it was referred to as the Public Art Reserve. However, reserves must be established by bylaw, and this was never done in accordance with the last policy. So we're moving the term, shifting the terminology to the Public Art Provision Fund in order to reflect, um, what is happening with those, with those funds. The Public Art Provision Fund can be authorized by council, um, to be used in the coming year during the budget cycle. So the new procurement, uh, for public art process will be a multi-phase process, which begins with the work plan created by the advisor, which outlines their annual art, uh, procurement program. The public art advisor runs a call for art or competition. Art is then selected by the public art advisor, and the location is determined as authorized. A contract is entered into by the District of Quamish, the art advisor, and the artist. Regarding the commission of the art, the ownership, links, or loan details, and then the advisor will continue to manage the program until, or the project until completion. If there is a purchase of art involved, the district will take ownership upon completion of the project. Funding mechanism will remain the same as established by the previous policy, where capital projects are funded in whole or in parts to address. Uh, this may not apply. The previous policy spoke to a reserve, uh, which I spoke to before and was never established by a bylaw. Staff are recommending that the use of provisions would be more applicable, and that the funding remain the same as, as previously established in the old policy, and there are no funding mechanism changes being presented today. This slide provides highlights of the roles established within the policy. The previous policy established a public art select committee and associated roles with that committee. The select committee is expired, and the new policy outlines roles relating to the new model where public art is managed and operated by a third party external to the district. The updated policy maintains much of the previous content as the old policy, but is restructured in a ma- in a manner which reflects the new model. So the public art advisor will be responsible for managing the public art program, developing and submitting an annual work plan, initiating public art competitions, providing a consistent, a consistent funding model to the art community, and encouraging public art within the community. The District of Quamish will be responsible for budget allocation, work plan consultation, maintaining of public art inventory, and updating and maintaining a map of suitable spaces for public art, consultation on projects regarding location, maintenance, and safety, and will also manage the public art provision. For the benefit of the public, I am going to provide some further information regarding art on public property and through community amenity contributions. So, uh, so art on private property, um, is not currently contemplated within the role of the public art advisor. The public art advisor role is limited to the sources described in the policy. The District of, District of Quamish policy cannot require a developer or private land owner to consult with the public art advisor, as the public art advisor is a third party, um, to the district. And the District of Quamish, um, has authority only on art on private property if the art is through a community amenity contribution funded by the district or donated through the district. To the district, my apologies. And the District of Quamish can, can consult with the public, um, with the public art advisor on projects. A developer or a private land owner may contact the public art advisor through advice or assistance of their own accord as they, if they wish to gain community insight on art in their development. An example of public art on private property are the Seven Bighs, as the Soraka Development, which are located on pub- on private lands but are publicly accessible and usable. Community amenity contributions. Public art is not currently listed within council's community amenity contribution policy. Community amenity contributions are voluntary, and public art could be contributed by a developer at any time. Council may amend the community amenity policy in the future to include public art contributions, in which case it is covered by the public art policy. Developers may consult the public art advisor, which is status quo to what we have in place now. So with that, I'll move to my recommendations. The council rescind the current public art policy dated May 6, 2014, and the council approve the updated public art policy dated July 14, 2020, at the special business meeting on July 21st, 2020. Thank you.
Counsel, are there any questions? I'm slow on refresh- okay, here we go. Counselor Pedengill.
So, council, and I appreciate the, the qualification, Ms. Dicker, but I just want to understand, so if, if an offer, a developer offered, um, some public art on their private property and said, this is part of a community amenity contribution, I'd like you to consider, in that case, there would be an expectation that is coordinated through the public advisor because it's a CAC, or offered as a CAC?
Yes, go ahead.
So the, the role of the public art advisor through the policy is basically related to the procurement through the public art fund of public art. Legally, you cannot require a third party, uh, sorry, developers to consult with a third party. So it's a little bit different to the public art committee that was in place previously, as that was a role, a district committee, and so related to the district could be used as a consultant and required that developer consult through the select committee. This is a little bit different, um, process now moving forward. And so the advisor is available for the District of Quamish staff to consult with, and also would be available for private developers to consult with, and maybe would be advisable that they would consult with the public art committee. However, we're unable to require that through policy, as the art advisor will be third party.
Okay. Um, and could we not just sort of say, oh, well, you know, if you don't want to go through the advisor, that's, that's fine, that's up here. We just wouldn't really consider that a community amenity contribution. But I guess maybe that's the decision council would make at a time on a, I don't buy it in vice.
Yes.
Okay. Um, no, with, going to a provision fund, and I understand we never established a reserve, but if, if we stay with just provision fund, does that mean that a future council could decide for whatever reason to reallocate those funds for some completely other purpose?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I would like to redirect that to the CFO, if she's available, or the corporate officer.
Uh, okay. So the CFO is on with us. Ms. Boxer, are you able to, um, respond?
She's muted.
You are muted if you are, uh, okay. We apparently can take your mute off here. Ms. Boxer?
Can you move on to a different question and come back to it later?
Okay.
Just repeat the question.
Can you just repeat the question, Counselor Pedengill?
Sure. Yeah. If we stay with the provision fund or this funding, does that mean that a future council, if there's money there, could decide to reallocate it to a completely different purpose if they decided? If that makes sense?
Ms. Boxer? Okay, so.
I'm trying to respond to that.
Ms. Boxer, it looks like she's ready to go, so let's, go ahead, Ms. Boxer. Okay, we're not hearing you, so, Ms. Arthurs?
If, if it's established as a non-statutory provision, not established by bylaw, it's just allocated by council, you can repurpose it at a later date.
And then the last item, um, art is often meant to be provocative, and there's also a lot of discussions around inclusiveness and being sensitive to the impact of what we do to other people. And I didn't see anything that was outlined in terms of what policy we might have around that or plans to develop policy. So can you just speak to how we would need to address that?
Ms. Dicker.
Through the Chair. The intention of the policy is to, um, remove and de-politicize public, public art decision-making and to put that in the hands of a trusted body with, um, expertise in public art and arts in general. And, and I believe that there is a provision within the policy. I don't know the number off the top of my head, um, but it speaks to, um, not, not, um, supporting art that is, um, related to any form of hate or racism. So with those two things in mind, um, I think that we are covered in, in that regard moving forward. And I would also suggest that maybe the term provocative isn't applicable in this situation, and maybe it's more subjective based on Quamish and what we've seen, um, thus far in the public art or arts movement.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Elliott?
Thank you. Um, just focusing on, on the policy, um, we started out by saying the purpose is for the public art policy to provide cultural leadership. And I, I'm not sure if it does that, but I do think it does the last part of the sentence. Um, so I don't know if, if you want to leave that in or not. Maybe I just don't understand what's meant by cultural leadership and how a policy accomplishes that. Um, and then in section 3.2, Ms. Dicker, in A, I think there's just one too many words in there. I think you're trying to say that we're respons- staff's responsible for making sure there's sufficient funding allocated to public art. But my big question is on the, the minimum set aside for maintenance of public art projects. Um, it says a minimum of 10% of the public art provision fund will be devoted for the purpose of special maintenance. And I wonder if there's a minimum dollar amount? And I imagine as well, if the provision is, if the public art, um, committee is saving for a major project, that provision fund is going to get bigger and bigger. And so, one, we already have public art in the public realm, and so what's a minimum maintenance amount we need in the provision to take care of what we already have? And then how should that grow over time? So this clause doesn't really capture that for me. Um, and maybe there's a maximum. So if the provision is being grown to enable a major project, we don't necessarily want to set aside 10% of that entire provision for maintenance necessarily. That might not make sense.
Counsel, are there any other questions? Counselor Anderson?
Um, how do you integrate, uh, private development, public art, this has been the most concerning, it's a discussion we've come back to, it's been there before. Um, I'm wondering, my question is whether when-
Speak up, please, Counselor Anderson.
Sorry?
Speak up. We're having troubles hearing you.
Thank you. So my question is whether, or if we review the community amenity contribution policy, whether we could revisit this, how to integrate. I'm comparing the City Richmond public, private development, public art program here in front of me. It is identical to the present policy in front of us. I'm looking at section 9.2, where developers, how they make, fulfill their public art decisions. The missing element is that Richmond offers to private developer, they can go to a consultant and the process, in which case here, we're talking about the advisor, or they can go to the city. We haven't quite got that structure, but what I'm concerned about is, is how we can, tools we can look at in future to better integrate, uh, the private developer component. So my question is, can we, to what extent can we revisit that community amenity contribution policy and insert new provisions? How do you look at this potential?
Okay. Uh, Ms. Dicker, just before, Counselor Anderson, your volume is lower than usual, so if you have got something different going on regarding your audio, please adjust. Go ahead, Ms. Dicker.
Thank you. Through the Chair. Staff have not looked at revising the community amenity contribution in its, um, current state. Um, we would have to have some direction from council to pursue a, a change to the community amenity contribution policy. We have included wording in this policy in case a voluntary community contribution comes forward, um, in the form of a public donation, and so we thought that that should be covered all in our policy. Uh, but yes, we would need direction from council, um, to go forward and look into changing the community amenity contribution policy if that was desired by council.
I will just follow up that, uh, this would, I wouldn't offer a resolution, uh, for vote that this time, we need to look at work plan and this sort of thing. But I shall just highlight the importance of this, the amount of dollars involved potentially in upcoming building projects in the private sector- sector are very large. These are very large projects that require a very robust process, and there are signs that developers themselves are interested in guidelines and in working with, it's a new game for many of them. And so I'll highlight the importance of this and that perhaps we may have opportunity to revisit this in future, but I can appreciate that it will be an evolving picture and we'll evaluate as we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Anderson. Councilor Heford.
Thank you. With this change, how do you see, I'm curious to get staff's perspective on how, to me, I think on the surface it could be seen as an administrative move with no change on the ground, or am I missing a sort of a reduction of barriers to access under-executed projects? And just sort of what that change looks like on the ground, or if it's a different version of status quo?
Go ahead, please.
Through the Chair, it's kind of a different version status quo, but it also alleviates the duplication of committees within the district. And so the art community already has functioned through the Squamish Art Council, and we had similar members on the public art select committee, and so that provides some efficiency for the art community and a single stream of funding under one umbrella, for a lack of better words. And so, yes, it's kind of a shift in the administration, but also creates efficiency for the art community as well as the district.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, Counsel? Mayor Elliott.
Thanks, Ms. Dicker. In section 16.3, this is in the de-accessioning process for donated art. It says staff must review the legal document relating to the donation prior to the de-accessioning process. And then further up, under Public Art Donations and Loans, 11.1, it says the, we may ask donated artwork to be evaluated by the public art advisor, and they should consider the following, but we don't mention, oh, we do right there in H. So I'm wondering, are we going to capture the fact that if we get donated works of art that we will put in the agreement that we are allowed to decommission the artwork at certain times? That 16.3 seemed to contradict H here. I just want to make sure that we're covered so that we're not in a battle with a family 60 years down the road when it's time to take a piece of art down.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, for that question. We, when we enter into the purchase of permission of a piece of art, the de-accessioning and the waiver of moral rights will be covered through an agreement with the artist. And so if we need to move, change, or, you know, provide special maintenance on a piece of art, we should not have any conflict with the artist in any of those circumstances. And so we just added that in that language of the legal agreement in there in the case of any existing legal agreement for existing public art that was procured prior to this policy.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Counsel? We have a staff recommendation that council rescind the current public art policy, A06A-02, dated May 6, 2014, and that council approve the updated public art policy dated July 14, 2020, at the special business meeting on July 21, 2020. Is there a mover? Moved by Mayor Elliott.
But I'd like to have it moved with consideration of the provision fund considered in terms of the minimum for maintenance.
Okay, is there a seconder? Seconded by Councilor Anderson. And is that sufficient enough for the note taker?
Do you want better language, sure?
I think what I've got is, okay, provision fund, consideration, minimum amount for maintenance.
Yep, and possibly an actual amount.
Okay.
That would be a dollar.
Councilor Penningill, followed by Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. I will be supporting this. I think there's some good adjustments here. I had some concerns about the funding level and so on, but that's a little more clear to me now and the integration with CAC, so I'm a little more comfortable there and also recognize this is a policy, so we can iterate on that, on this. The one thing that jumped out at me, and it's not particular to this policy, but for me, the why or the outcomes, the purpose, is a little bit light, and there's a lot of detail on the mechanics of the policy. And going forward, I would kind of like to see a little bit more about the why and the outcome. So for example, anywhere, because we're doing this, anywhere you stand in Squamish, you'll be able to see or hear public art within a 200-meter radius. Unprofessional artists will see their art displayed throughout Squamish and sort of more, more like, you know, what are we going to see on the street because we are doing this? And then leave staff a lot more flexibility on getting there and not be, be a little less prescriptive on some of the mechanics underneath. But I do appreciate the work that's into this, and I will be supporting this.
Councilor Anderson.
I just wanted to highlight Mayor Elliott's addition to the motion, that is, the reference to maintenance fund and the importance of that. We will do our upcoming budget discussion this fall, be discussing an item that came up during the last round concerning maintenance of district-owned public art. And there are a number of pieces, not a number, but there are some pieces that are requiring maintenance. This has been identified by our public works department, so we'll have opportunity to review that. I just wanted to highlight the importance of that addition to the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Anonymous, the motion carries. And Ms. Dicker, I believe we're back to you again on the topic of community grant policy. You are on mute, we can't hear you.
I'm going to share my screen with council, if your moment is. Okay, have we got the right screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, council, for your time this afternoon. My name is Sarah Dicker. I am the manager of Arts and Culture, and I'm joined today by Natasha Golbeck, the general manager of Community Services, and we are presenting the community grant policy update for council's initial review and feedback prior to approval. The objective of today is to gain feedback on the draft policy prior to approval of the policy at a future meeting. And the overview of what we're going to discuss today is a background on the project, some program changes that will come to light upon the adoption of the updated policy, the role of a community grant organization and the introduction of that role, the present state of community granting, so what granting has been used previously for, and the proposed future state of the program, as well as the benefits of the new process and next steps, for example, as well as the recommendations. So I've got a long list, so I'm going to get going. And the background on this policy update is that council passed a resolution on December 10, 2019, directing staff to bring back an alternative process to the community enhancement grant system, and to investigate a partnership agreement with a not-for-profit community group to manage the granting process, and to investigate and allocate a fair budget amount, as well as to review the delegation by law to allow staff the ability to waive fees for not-for-profit organizations. So major program changes include a focus of the grants on council's strategic priorities, the introduction of a community grant organization role, the delegation of the approval authority to the chief administrative officer, a delegation by law will be coming forward to that effect, as well as in-kind with less budgeted for, through the fees and charges amendments that will be coming for council's consideration and implemented in 2021, and a budget allocation for tipping fees and road closures, as well as traffic management for community events. The community grant organization is an introduction in this policy, and basically the policy gives council the authority to enter into agreements with not-for-profits in the community who have expertise in a specific area and grant distribution experience. And these organizations will be selected by council and identified by council for the provision of community grant programs within the District of Squamish on behalf of council. So the roles of the community grant organization are the management and dispersal of grant funding, establishing and running a community grant program, ensuring applicants use funding for the purposes that go within their application and within that year, and requiring reports from all successful applicants as one project's completion, as well as reporting to council annually on the use of the grant funding. The community grant organization will also be required to provide the CAO with a recommendation for the, or for the award of the grant funding, along with the criteria on which they evaluated those awards. And so the CAO will be able to determine whether that meets the needs of the policy prior to the award of the funding. The District of Squamish will be responsible for allocating budgets to the community grant program, selecting the grant organizations and entering into agreements with them, determining how grant funding is divided between the community grant organizations for specific granting purposes, and allocating funding to community grant organizations to run competitions and grant programs, as well as approving, the CAO in that approving role when recommendations are made by the community grant organization. So the present state of community grants is before council here, and the bulk of the money going towards poverty, sports, social, environmental, and downtown events at $131,000. We have in-kind tipping fees, road closures, space rentals, trail maintenance at $85,000. The Squamish Community Foundation currently receives funding at the value of $10,000, which they distribute through their neighborhood grant program. And the Squamish Art Council currently receives $20,000, which they distribute through their community arts and culture enhancement grant process. And so the proposed future state for the community grant program is that the Squamish Art Council receives $31,500, the Squamish Foundation receives $82,500, the mayor's youth council receives $25,000, trail maintenance remains at $85,000. The downtown events are receiving $18.5,000. Space rentals, so we're going to take an average of the in-kind granted for space rentals and lower the fee for space rentals by that amount for not-for-profit over one year. And then road closures and traffic management will be allocated $21,000 into the public works as a budget line, as well as tipping fees at $8.5,000 will be managed through a budget line item in the engineering department's annual budget. The benefit of the new process is to create administrative efficiency for staff and the public, as well as council moving to a high-level role in selecting the organizations and not having to sit through the annual process of determining successful grants and awarding grants for the community, as well as empowering community groups to make change and to distribute funding within the community, and enabling the community groups to leverage funding if such opportunities came forward where a partnering grant with a federal or provincial government was available. So the next step for council will be to endorse the new policy, and then to authorize the agreement with community grant organizations to bring forward a delegation, staff will bring forward a delegation by law to authorize the CAO to approve the grant recommendation from the community grant organization, and staff will bring forward a season charges amendment to lower the cost of space handles for not-for-profit groups. The recommendation today is that council rescind the community grant policy dated September 20, 2016, and that council approve the updated community grant policy at the special business meeting on July 21, 2020. Staff are welcoming council feedback and comments and any amendments that they may have prior to adoption. I'll now give some questions. Thank you, council, for your time.
Counsel, questions? Mayor Elliott.
So perhaps you could speak to the tables that you presented, and the category around alleviating poverty and social issues seems to have disappeared. So where does that land in the second table?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Dicker.
Through the Chair, I would like to pass a question to the, sorry, the general manager of Community Services, if she's available. Otherwise, I will attempt to answer the question.
Ms. Golbeck, please.
Yeah, thank you, through the Chair. The intention of the redirection of the future state funds to community grant organizations was to maximize value and return on investment towards council's strategic plan and to minimize funding programs that would otherwise be funded by other levels of government. The poverty reduction initiatives often fall under provincial or federal government programs, and so focusing our resources on areas that are traditionally funded by municipal governments is the intention.
Mayor Elliott.
What's interesting, living through COVID-19, is that senior levels of government had to pour more money into the not-for-profit sector, and now they're saying, please don't take it away. But it's a chronically underfunded sector, and I'm not sure, I guess my problem is connecting this too much to council's strategic plan and not enough to the OCP, which has a health lens and a child wellness lens and youth lens. So I think we've maybe taken it down too low instead of keeping it more broadly, but I think for me, that's going to be problematic with this. The other question I had around the table is that it talks about a youth granting stream and that the mayor's youth council would enable that. There's pretty limited staff resources behind the mayor's youth council, so how does staff imagine that the youth council would take on this stream?
Ms. Golbeck, please, go ahead.
Through the Chair, the details are yet to be worked out, but certainly there would be staff support available for grant administration.
Councilor Anderson, I have you up next, unless there's anything further from Mayor Elliott. Councilor Anderson.
Can I make a comment? Yes, thank you. I'd like to follow up partly in what Mayor Elliott is raising. I note that not only poverty, looking at the graph, present state that was presented, poverty, support, social, environmental, these were part of the earlier allocation schema under miscellaneous. under miscellaneous grants. So I'd like to also highlight not only poverty, but we have health organizations that have come forward in the past, but also amateur sports, and not only youth sports, the seniors as well, so they can say all ages, community entertainment, sports activity. And I'll also include environmental. So I'm seeing, in summary, a different emphasis or even nonemphasis on these, and so that is a general question. I would also just conclude by saying that I don't think it's a matter of only of scope of the allocation program. The allocation program is also an opportunity for coordination within certain sectors, and I think we're actually moving to that in some aspects of the new proposed model. I'll give an example. Swamish used to have a recreation association, which allocated funding and set priorities for all amateur sports and the all ages, and it hasn't fell away because its civic municipal role increased in its profile and kind of absorbed it, but it's been pointed out that perhaps we do need that coordination. So there is also an element of coordination to consider and opportunity for that. We discussed that with respect to arts and culture, but I'll leave it at that. My general question is where then, following Mayor Elliott, poverty and health, but also amateur sports and environmental projects fit into the new scheme? Thank you.
Ms. Galback, please, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And sort of elaborating on my earlier comments about funding areas where municipal governments typically play the strongest and highest ROI role. Certainly, health is an area that is funded by the regional health authority and through the province. And environment, as we've previously discussed before, has been, the community energy and emissions plan was a vehicle for funding programs related to the environment. So just trying to be clear and intentional about what programs are funding what activities, so that the environment programs are, have been analyzed in the collection of environment infrastructure in the organization to ensure that we're being most strategic with those resources. In terms of sports, amateur sports, Ms. Dicker mentioned the season charges bylaw amendment that will be bringing forward if council is supportive of this, that we lower the rate of nonprofit space rentals. Typically, these are sporting organizations, amateur sports organizations. And the intention of doing it this way is that staff wanted to achieve some equity across amateur sports organizations. In the previous law, some organizations have come forward and requested in-kind grants, and others wouldn't, and so there wasn't a lot of equity in how we were supporting community sports. So by applying the amount that we've previously allocated in-kind space rentals to the category of nonprofit space rentals, knowing that that's typically amateur sports, it's a more equitable model, is the intention.
That's helpful. Chair, I did have another question on another topic, as you would like.
Go ahead, please.
All right. With respect to the present policy includes a Schedule A outlining eligible and ineligible reasons at the grant. And I note in the discussion of the present proposed policy under Section 2.3, which discusses ineligibility, there is no longer a reference to funding operating expenses that is staff, for example. One thing that came up, I believe, was two years ago, was whether funding for a fundraising position, that had come up, if I'm not mistaken. So there are long lists of eligibility, eligibility in that Schedule A. Do you contemplate such a schedule in the new policy, because it looks rather stripped down? And in particular, I'll highlight that area of operating expenses. Should operating expenses for an organization be considered?
Ms. Dicker? You're still on mute?
Okay, I think I'm on that. Apologies. Thank you for your question, Counselor Anderson, to the chair. The intention was to strip the policy down, as community partnerships and agreements have been established previously with, for example, the Arts Council, and the segmentation of grant funding happens as well through the community foundation in their small neighborhood grant program. The ability for these two groups to determine eligibility and create those criteria has been proven, and so we have a level of trust in those organizations, in their proven demonstration of granting in the past. Should we need to, or should we feel the need to add an additional schedule if this policy doesn't work for some reason? That could be added in the future, but currently we don't think that that is necessary. However, if council requires that, we would certainly add that schedule in there.
Thank you. And now Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. My question follows up well to Counselor Anderson, that was also looking at Schedule A of the previous policy, which says that eligible costs include traffic management and facility rentals, but we're then allocating other budget line items for things like road closure. Then do we explicitly state that those are no longer eligible costs through the granting stream if we've allocated that money elsewhere?
Ms. Dicker.
Thank you, Counselor Stoner. It is our intention that the community grant programs will be cash-only grants, and so we are allocating that traffic management budget and road closure budget to staff in order to utilize for those larger community events. However, if an event came through that, I don't know, required another form of traffic management and the district couldn't provide for that, then perhaps that could be determined as an eligible cost by the community grant organization. The benefit of this relationship is that when these projects come forward, the community grant organizations have the ability to work with the district to determine the capacity at the district level for the provision of road closures for certain projects, and so it would be determined on a case-by-case basis by then. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Stoner.
Do you want to follow to that? And I appreciate the direction that staff are trying to go with this. I'm just curious about the process a little bit in terms of the, we're still required to get an estimate from the district as to how much that work would cost, and then the community or the granting organization is then required to tally if, and say, oh, we've reached our max. Are there two different application streams? How do those two things get managed concurrently?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for your question, Counselor Stoner. It actually was my contemplation that traffic management would be requested through the community grant organization application process. However, you bring up an interesting point. I think that we would work out a process with the community grant organization, knowing that that could be a possibility, and that we would set up a function whereby it was clear what the expectation of the applicant would be.
Mayor Elliott.
So two questions. One, I'm curious why staff have chosen council's strategic plan as the benchmark for this policy rather than the OCP. And the second is why we feel the need for the CAO to approve grants rather than just setting the criteria for the granting organizations, letting them do their job, and if they're not doing a good job, our control is actually not giving them money anymore and terminating the agreement. So I'm not quite sure what role the CAO plays in this.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Mayor Elliott, for your question. In regards to the OCP, I think it was more determined that that was quite a broad policy to base a grant program around. I think that the council's strategic priorities are established based on council's needs and, you know, for the community in order to benefit the community, and so that's why we linked the two, as well as this being a municipal-funded grant. We thought that that would, you know, meet the needs of the community effectively. And then on your second point for the approval by the CAO, actually, that's a legal requirement. So if the community grant organizations are running a grant program on behalf of the district, it's required that there is a kind of check and balance. So either A, it comes back to council for council's approval, which politicizes, again, the granting stream, and I think council's intention, correct me if I'm wrong, was to take the granting out of the political realm and to have the community grant organization take that role on. And so in order to meet the requirements of the community charter, we must have somebody authorized at the district's level to approve those grants. There is another option that council could provide the grant funds to a community organization for the purpose of meeting and fulfilling their own mandate, and that is up to council whether or not they want the grants to be done on behalf of the district and to meet the district's mandate or district priorities, or if they want them to be done by community groups in order to meet their own, to meet the community group's mandate. So that's for council's direction. I hope that answers your question, Mayor.
And Ms. Galback, did you want to contribute to that as well? You're on mute.
Yeah, just briefly, in terms of the council's strategic plan and the OCP, the operational period of the strategic plan is closer in alignment with the operational period for the community grant cycle. So those two things lining up seems like an opportunity. Also, these are opportunities to be innovative in ways that we can't always do with operational programs. So the community can have ideas that can contribute to, towards very specific goals, like activation of the public realm, for example, which was the intention. If council wished to align this closer to the OCP, I think there's definitely some items in the OCP that we can specify in the policy that we'd like people to focus on, where we think there'd be the best return on investment, given the relatively small pot of funds, we'd want to focus it in a little bit closer than the OCP as a whole, but we can certainly do that.
Can I follow?
Counselor Peddingill.
Can I follow afterwards?
Yes, thank you. One of the things I think I raised last time, the community enhancement grants, was questions about who was applying to the grants and the sort of accessibility and inclusion of the granting. So are there any expectations built into this to make sure that we are, a broader segment of our community knows these grants are available and are supported in applying for the grants?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Counselor Peddingill, for your question. I think that the intention of providing the grant programs at the community organization level is that they have a more, a closer touch point to the community than perhaps the municipal government would, and so their networks are broader-reaching and potentially would get more traction with the community as a whole, rather than the more traditional municipal granting stream, which could be daunting for some individuals and also hasn't got that closeness with the community.
Counselor Peddingill, that's good. Okay, Counselor Stoner saw your hand, and Mayor Elliott wants me to come back around, so if there's anybody else that wants, let me know. Go ahead, Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. So my other question is just around the proposed future state, and there's a line item there for the community events downtown, the DFCIA, and I'm just wondering why staff are proposing to pull that out, whereas it is similar to other community events that may occur that fall under that broader mandate of what might fall under the Swamish Community Foundation organization grant.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, to the chair. The intention of pulling those events out were that they were identified in the arts and culture heritage strategy engagement as more broader-reaching community events that are important to the community. And so we, staff identified those community events as important to the community and important that consistent funding was provided to those events, specifically not to lose the event for the community. And so that is why they have been pulled out. However, it could be, that kind of money could be rolled into the broader granting stream if council's direction was that. Thank you.
Mayor Elliott.
Yeah, so our, I'm, I get that our strategic plan can drive change, but every four years you have a new council with new strategic priorities, and the OCP is actually a document that runs from council to council, and our strategic plan was derived from the OCP. Everything that is in our strategic plan is a policy reflected in the OCP. So I think that there isn't a lot of reference to the OCP in this policy, and we have goals around livability, health, connectivity, resiliency, engagement, and those five high-level goals are really, really critical and more important to me. I think the other element that we should be thinking about as a community and moving towards as a community are the UN Sustainability Development Goals, Sustainable Development Goals. And so I think this is, this doesn't capture enough for me in that regard. We put all this effort into the OCP around putting a health lens on it, and then we're saying, we won't grant in that direction here because that's another level of government's responsibility. That doesn't sit well with me. So I think for me, I have to see more of our OCP language reflected in this policy and moving any of those granting organizations in that direction.
Counsel, are there any other questions? I'm sent, yes, go ahead, Counselor Hubbard.
Thank you. This process in the past, as much as it's been painful for the council member to go through, and I appreciate the policy work, but it seems to be the catch-all for things that just don't quite fit. And I think that sort of speaks to Mayor Elliott's point of the, this blanket not-funding more social and health-related pieces to the political level of the government. And this is about building some resiliency in our, in our, in our community, actually. And I would like to see those broader things represented here, and as much as I appreciate staff's intent to go towards our strategic plan, as that is our, you know, our collective plan as a council, you know, the strategic plan is quite focused, and this, in general context, to me, is the pieces that fall through those, through those facts. I think we're, yes, I think there's some more words to be out there, and I agree with Mayor Elliott, as far as the, looking at the, or perhaps, to, to conduct something broader than where we are, is where I'm sitting at this point. And I suppose, sorry, that's other questions for you.
Yeah. Yeah, not a question, and I'm sensing that it's time for us to move on to a motion, and I'm also getting the feeling that the staff recommendation isn't quite capturing what we're looking for. Mayor Elliott.
Well, just a point of order, it's committee the whole, so it is a place where we can have discussions, so if you've got time, you're the chair. I don't think I don't think we need to be as strict on that.
Okay, great. And we don't necessarily have a lot of time. We are behind schedule. So I'll just do another check-in. Is there any, Councilor Peddengill?
Yeah, a couple of comments. For me, you know, I understand, I can be online with sustainability development goals of the OCP or broadening the sort of focus in that. But I think even within each of those, I would like to see a little more detail on the expected outcomes. So if we give this amount of money to the community foundation to give out, what are the outcomes we will see as a result of that? Kind of that needs to be a little more fleshed out for me to feel comfortable with that. The other piece, I think, with the BIA and some of those festivals, I am a little bit more comfortable rolling those. And I think there's, you know, the Seek Festival, the Pala at home, a few other things that in my mind are in a similar ballpark. And I would like those all to be considered together, I think. And I think it's a bit premature to single out the couple of events we have so far.
Great. Thank you, Councilor Peddengill. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to ask council for some clarification in terms of moving forward. Would it be council's expectation that the health-focused grants and grants focused on poverty and social services be rolled into the mandate of the Community Foundations grant, granting? Or would you, do you have any suggestions on a community grant organization to take on that role?
Mayor Elliott.
To me, it would fit within the community foundations sort of mandate. I think that's a natural fit. And I agree with Councilor Peddengill that if you took those five high-level goals around the OCP and put outcomes next to them that we want to see from this policy, I think we'd get a more specific and yet broader program that would, I think, do the work we want it to do on behalf of the district.
Councilor Peddengill.
If I could just respond a little bit. For me, part of the challenge with the previous grant process was not that we were at the council trying to decide ourselves. Like, that was the core of the issue. It felt a little bit ad hoc and disconnected from some of our other goals. So I was looking for, what's the most efficient way to tackle some of the challenges? And often, I think, community groups can do a more efficient job. And so in some cases, it does make sense that council can do that. Maybe there are better ways for us to spend that money to achieve some of those goals internally. So it could be a different organization. It might be the community foundation. I'm not fixated on who. I just want to understand, these are the best ways to solve the most important challenges we've identified.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilor Stoner.
Thank you. I agree with both the mayor and Councilor Peddengill's point, that I think that further detail in really incorporating that into kind of the first section of policy, the goals and the principles, is really important. And then the other piece that I am still having a little bit of trouble wrapping my head around is the interaction between our choice of lowering fees and charges for space rentals and the road closures and traffic management, and then how that relates to potential grant applications that would come in through the community organization. And so I would like to see some further clarity on how those two things would interact when this comes back.
Councilor Race.
Yeah, just weighing in on that issue about whether or not the community foundation's the appropriate body for the health grants. And I think it is. You know, they've had healthy community studies and so forth, and I think they're quite tuned historically to that sector of our community. Absolutely appropriate.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any thoughts? Councilor Anderson, and then I'll add myself to the list.
Very generally, I think that with reference to Councilor Stoner's comments, that the broad goals might be better highlighted in the way of preamble or made clear. However, as I, through the discussion and staff's responses, I'm impressed with the review that's taken place. It has taken our probing to find out what your thinking was, but as I listen and consider your takes, I think it's been very worthwhile exercise. I think that some of the things we're discussing, including some of the health areas, has been overdue for review. And I'm pleased to strike into this new model. I think that, I was just going to start by saying, with respect to OCP, we, of course, have a whole bigger arena of work plans and budgets and project initiatives and prioritizing to relate to our OCP goals. And this should leave us more time to do that. But I do agree that clarification of those goals would be nice to have upfront in the policy. Thank you.
And Councilor Anderson, just to take note that your audio is still lower than it has been in the past. So you still have something that is preventing you from your full audio capabilities. And for myself, Ms. Dicker, the health, social services, I believe that having those captured by the community foundation is totally appropriate and the direction that I'd like to see us go. So, council, we need a recommendation for staff. Mayor Elliott.
I guess I have a question for staff. Is that there's been quite substantial feedback. Your plan was to bring it back next week for endorsement. And I guess I'm wondering whether you feel that that's enough time to engage with some of our community partners and bring back a revised policy.
Yes, go ahead.
For the mayor, with permission from this BAO and the corporate officer, it may be possible to present the strategy on next week's agenda for adoption. However, a late report would have to be accepted as we're way past the deadline for the agenda at this point. We, I have scheduled a meeting tonight with the board of the community foundation and also with the Tormas Arts Council later in this week. So it may be possible, given the amount of work that's already went into this, it's, yeah, we, I don't know at this stage.
I'm seeing Ms. Arthur's nodding, so are there any other staff that would like to weigh in? Ms. Galbeck, go ahead.
Yeah, just seeing some clarity from council, to the degree to which this is a priority to implement for the next granting cycle. That has been the direction in the past. And if that's still council's wish, we can push forward and make that happen. But just wanted some clarity around that.
Okay, Ms. Glende, your hand was up as well.
I would like council to answer that question first before I, wait until.
Okay, Councilor Race, I saw your hand. Go ahead.
More question. Are we having a meeting on the 28th, a special meeting, which is the last meeting I expect before the break?
Yes. Yes, we are.
They're full agenda, Councilor Race.
Thank you, pardon?
Yes, we are having a meeting on the 28th. And every meeting between now and summer break is going to be action-packed.
Yeah, but if it's a relatively short thing for endorsement, maybe it's simple. But anyway, that was just a suggestion. If we're having a special last day, we could tack it on somehow.
Mayor Elliott.
Next week.
I would prefer if council's original motion, which is to have a new plan in place for this granting season, is still the goal.
Councilor Herford.
I'd agree with the mayor. Isn't, is it possible to, I appreciate the timelines and being exceptionally tight. Is it possible that we know we're going in that direction and go for the granting period later, so provide another bit of time? Although I know that a week right now actually means two months, so I'm concerned about that. But just as far as the mechanics of the timing of the steps, I think that there's general support for going in a direction, notwithstanding all the limitations of today. So is there a half-step that we can take once we're going to be certainly in progress in these grants? And we can, you know, finish this off when we've actually had the most important discussion and after the break, if that will, what, if we're best to stop, to see if that is reasonable.
Ms. Glende, please.
Thank you, for the chair. I think at this point, what would be prudent if this offline staff were to wrap their heads around what can we accomplish by next week? Talk to the CFO around the granting timeline, what would make sense? I'm loathe to do this ad hoc in the middle of a meeting. And if you would allow staff to wrap their heads around that, and then I can let Mayor Elliott know in terms of the agenda and the planning and what is possible, if that's feasible. And then I do have another question after, if I might.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that an appropriate motion would be that we defer this till next week, so staff can report back?
Yes.
Very good. Yes, go ahead.
Assuming that actually wasn't a motion on the floor, and I can ask a clarifying question?
Yes, please do.
Okay, thank you. Just for my own clarity of thinking about support staff, I've heard aligning with the OCP. I've also heard aligning with the UN Sustainability Goals. And then I've heard outcomes and goals related to those OCP areas. So if we could get some clarity on what direction council would like us to go in terms of amending this policy, that would be very helpful.
Council, clarity on amending policy. Mayor Elliott.
To me, I think we have to first look to our five goals of our OCP and put some outcomes around each of those. That's a start. I think my long-term goal is eventually to figure out a way to get us aligned with the UN SDG, but I'd start with OCP as a first stop.
Yes, Ms. Glende.
Thank you. And to give you more clarity, when you say outcomes related to the five pillars of the OCP, I'm not entirely sure what that is that would be separate from restrictions to plan as an example. Like, does the council have something in mind that would help me better understand that? I don't know, there are other staff.
Mayor Elliott.
There's pretty specific wording in each of those five goal areas in the OCP. And there's work underway under all of them. So I think the outcomes would be related to that.
Ms. Glende, does that give you enough?
Yes, I think if I go back and look at the OCP with staff, we can, we can work on something, thank you.
All right. Then do we have a motion?
Motion to defer.
Mayor Elliott, moves that we defer. Second to by, Councilor Stoner. Is there any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And I think this is a great time for us to take a break of 10 minutes. So if we could be back at 3:40. Good afternoon and welcome back to our Committee of the Whole meeting. The next item on our agenda is UBCM Conference Minister Meetings discussion. And I'm turning to Mayor Elliott to lead us on this.
All right. So UBCM, of course, is looking very different this year. It's all virtual. And they have put out a call for minister meetings, but it's highly likely that they will take place around UBCM, not during UBCM. But still, we get to go through the process every year where council discusses what ministers we would like to request meetings with in relation to UBCM. And also, don't forget that we can also go in groups of people. So if there's other municipalities that you might consider that we would approach a minister together, we can suggest that too. I think, what's our deadline? August 4th. So we have a few weeks to talk about this. So I will just open the discussion by saying that I think we should follow up on our letter to Minister Farnworth and request a meeting around public safety and public health and the intersection of those two things. And I'll let you chair from here.
Councilor Stoner, go ahead.
Thank you. That was going to be one I was going to bring up as well. Your members may perhaps recommend also requesting a meeting with Minister Darby in an effort to try and gain a few allies at the ministerial level on that topic.
Very good. Thank you. Councilor Anderson, then Councilor Race.
Yes, I'd like to take up Mayor Elliott's suggestion of entertaining, working together with other municipalities on select things. And the one I have in mind, and I'm just sort of testing you here on this, is BCR properties. I think that this would be something we would discuss beforehand with other municipalities. And I have to particular in mind Mayor, Mayor Pinnell-Boss Simpson, who as you may know is a former colleague of several key ministers in the present cabinet and who they hold in high regard, as I've encountered. My intention is to raise not only the matter of the BCR North Yards, which Mayor Elliott and Kate Mulligan, our team, have been working on, but there are more general issues with BCR properties and are shared with other municipalities. They include our dilemma with negotiations, which Linda's been heading up on the rail line downtown. But there are other issues as well that we could sit down and strategize on. I've talked with Mayor Simpson a number of times on this, and I'd be interested to hear what he thinks about it. I've done a little bit of research as well, going back into Hansted. The last time, there was a government review of BCR properties, which when they brought it into the Ministry of Transportation in 2010. So that's the last provincial government. And at that time, it was Bruce Ralston, who we met with back in, I guess it was February here, was very vigorous in his questions. So a number of people took part in that debate, asking very interesting questions about the mandate of BCR properties. And perhaps we might remind them or prod them further. I don't have an update, but I just suggest this as an idea. The first step would be to discuss this with other mayors. And Mayor Elliott has suggested that Lilwet has joined that conversation at some point as well. So BCR properties, that would be the Minister of Transportation, will also highlight other issues where I've mentioned the yards, but this recent experience.
Oh, my. Councilor Anderson, you are on a slow burn there. Okay, we seem.
With seeing arson, this subject.
So. Councilor Anderson, I might recommend you turn off your video so that we can get maximum audio out of you. And in the meantime, I think Councilor Race.
Do you have other topics?
Yeah, Councilor Race, let's go to you while we get Councilor Anderson sorted out.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not sure if Councilor Anderson can hear me, but we actually, it's a little like banging your head against the wall sometimes. But we had a meeting at the end of last term at UBCM with Minister Cavina on the BCR issues, not just the North Yards, but other issues, which are property transfer issues. And so far, I'm not sure of much progress. We were, coupled with Mayor Cobb of Williams Lake, who ultimately came up at the last minute, they also had issues. And what we were, basically, what we were asking the minister was to review the BCR mandate letter, which dates back to about 2005, actually, BCRP's mandate letter to dispose of the property, best value, et cetera, and to put a kind of a social lens on that and a community benefit lens on that and not try and charge that top dollar for things that we might try to get. That seems to have gone nowhere, actually. So I'll just make that comment. The reason I had my hand out the first time was actually a question through the mayor, what the issues are specifically with Minister Farnworth about public health. Are there some specific issues around that?
We sent a letter to Minister Farnworth outlining some asks around supporting RCMP with more mental health resources. with more mental health resources. And as well as improving their training on systemic bias and de-escalation. So I think this is while you were away. It was on the agenda. So it would be following up on that. We CC'd a number of ministries because we also proposed some actions around a more just recovery in terms of better mental health and addiction support in communities across the province, not just in large communities. So it would be following up on that, which is why Counsel Stoner also included Minister Darcy in that her ministry would have quite a bit to do with the response as well.
You're right. I didn't hear about that, so thank you.
Counsel Anderson, we bumped up against some bandwidth issues at your end. You want to turn off your video and try again? Apparently, the bandwidth issues continue.
Bruce?
Okay, Counsel Penangill, was I seeing your hand?
Yes. So this is a question, I think, to Mayor Elliott and Counsel Stoner, maybe. I know UBCM is working on some climate things to bring to the province, I believe. And I'm thinking the government is looking at post-COVID, COVID recovery things. We've got our tourism sector, which is particularly hard hit. So I'm just looking for information or thoughts about, in that context, are there particular issues we could be joining up with? Or perhaps in that, that would make sense for us to address?
I'm not familiar with, I'm not part of UBCM or LMLGA. Counsel Stoner may have some more visibility than I do about any executive motions that are coming through UBCM.
Counsel Stoner.
Yeah, thank you. I don't have any more insight about those that are coming through UBCM. There were two executive motions through LMLGA, but neither of them were specifically climate oriented. And I'm actually not sure how those resolutions are being handled through the UBCM process. Haven't heard of any specific coordination in that front.
Counsel Penangill, anything further?
Now a moment. Thank you.
Mayor Elliott.
I'm trying to remember all the motions we put forward to LMLGA. It seems like so long ago. Does anybody else remember?
Go ahead, Counsel Anderson.
Sorry, I'm finding that we're picking up from, for me anyways, if you might just be patient with me. One of the resolutions that I had drafted myself was on natural resource roads. And my feeling is that it would be premature to entertain a meeting with the minister at this time. Let it go through the process this fall of the resolutions process at UBCM. But also, I envision that resolution as part one. And that is, it is simply a reclassification and description of roads, setting us up for a new model of funding of roads. I would also like to work together with our community forest board and manager on this resolution because its issues are very much the issues that will be prominent for, will be, they will be prominent with the community forest. So my suggestion on the natural resource road resolution with respect to minister meetings is to wait until we can sift through, see if we follow what happens, and come up with a strategy for next time.
Thank you.
I did also want to just say that SLRD will be discussing this as well. And I think I would like our regional transit push to come through the SLRD because that's got all the mayors and chair situated there. So I think that is a better ask from that direction. But I do want to, I think, follow up with Minister Trevina again on highway maintenance and safety. So not only intersection safety, but fulfilling their maintenance contracts as promised with a highway upgrade and following up on that. And any additional pressure we can put to bear, again, on our problematic intersections and the growth that their intersections are needing to support without any investment in the corridor recently. So MOTI on intersection and safety and maintenance would be one for me.
Counsel Herford, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, I did. And I'm curious about, as we look at BCR properties and sort of focusing on getting that over the finish line or to the start line of being able to feel the economic benefits of that land. So how, you know, whatever those last pieces are, I don't think that, because we have momentum, I think we should sort of pile on rather than let it roll with what it has. So and then I agree with the mayor on the highway maintenance. The worst sections of, never mind intersection design, which is terrible and all the rest, but the worst actual physical pieces of pavement are within the district as it relates to the highway, having spent quite a bit of time on it recently.
Thank you. And I'll just follow up. I was in the meeting with Trevana last year. Counsel Penangill was there with us. And I felt generally that we were getting a lot of nodding and smiling on the other side of the table. And what has not happened in the meantime is reflective of that nodding and smiling. And I think it's totally appropriate to revisit and try and have another meeting with Trevana. Counsel Anderson, I saw your hand, but Counsel Herford, is this specific to highways? Okay, go ahead, Counsel Anderson.
I just was unclear on Counsel Herford's rec.
Okay. Counsel Anderson, we definitely have got issues with your bandwidth. And I think when you speak, you're best to turn your video off.
BCR properties, I just didn't hear these.
Okay. Counsel.
Thank you. My buttons are playing tricks on me here on my screen. I just was unclear of Counsel Herford's suggestion with respect to BCR properties.
Counsel Herford.
My suggestion was just to keep, was to, was very general, is to keep pushing as much as we've, there's been good work and progress there. I think it's worth addressing, even if that work is in progress. And but feet to the fire on that one, because it feels like we're getting some work done. And then I did have my hand up for another one that, and Counsel Penangill, you were reminiscing about last year's meetings. I thought about what we met with last year with camp. One of the meetings I was in was regarding camping in Monroe, trying to get some support here. And this issue is, maybe isn't so prevalent this year, given the COVID and everything that's happening. But we still have a lot of work to do here. And I haven't seen action in the province to help. So, you know, whether we keep asking for the same meetings on the same topics and get the same answers, so we try to get some action here. So or maybe there's another direction to go. But that, come this time next year, we're going to be looking at a more acute situation. We need to get something happening, and we need help from the province to do that. Whether that's, you know, the Destination BC money actually going into infrastructure rather than into advertising for more people to come, or more Monroe for the actual building of the, of low-cost camping close to town, or I don't know, any other number of solutions.
Thank you. And for anybody that wants a refresh on our LMLGA resolutions, they're in your inbox. If you just want to pull those up for reference. Counsel Reese.
Thank you. I was just going to say, and it's a general comment, really, that we want to be a little bit strategic, I think, with these ministerial meetings in the sense that, in my experience, the ones that happen at UBCM tend to be, and it's always been referred to as like speed dating, where you're kind of in, shake hands, a couple of sentences out, and then you shake hands and you leave. And so it's really, it's at very best, it's sometimes an introduction of a topic. Because the other thing that has historically happened, at least with liberals, was if you saw a minister at UBCM, then you didn't have much of a chance of seeing that minister for a more meaningful, in-depth discussion within the next probably six months. They sort of seemed to consider that that was your time in front of the minister and go away for a while. So sometimes it was more advantageous to not see the minister at UBCM and try and book a meeting separately with him face-to-face, or whatever the equivalent might be today. So I think we do not necessarily want to put everything in front of ministers at UBCM. I think we want to sometimes just pick and choose.
Mayor Elliott.
So staff have also had some thoughts. Ms. Glende, do you want me to cover those? Or do you want to?
I'm happy to speak to those. Mayor Elliott, if you like, I just need to pull up what I sent you. Give me one second here. Okay. To the chair, I'm okay to go ahead?
Yes, please. Yes, go ahead.
Do my quick technology. Further to Counsel Anderson, in terms of the provincial, or sorry, the BCR lands and the provincial restart program, there are a number of ministries that economic development has recommended we reach out to in that sense. One would be, of course, MODI, having to do with BCR. Jobs, Trades and Technology, Energy Lines and Petroleum, which is Minister Ralston. And the consideration around any kind of proposal would be Indigenous Affairs and Reconciliation perhaps, given that we would want to be collaborating with Spanish nations. So that's specific to BCR lands and any kind of provincial restart proposal. And separately, staff are also suggesting Ministry of Transportation around transit funding. And forgive me if I'm repeating anything council has already discussed, especially as it relates to COVID impacts in addition to the regional transit, which I hear is SLRD-driven. One idea from Mr. Buckton is the property assessed clean energy financing. So it allows municipalities to offer loans for energy-saving retrofits. This would likely be something they would have to go through the community charter and legislative team, so it would be a piece of focus on housing. I'm thinking that would be more appropriate than finance, that we would look into that if it was something council wanted to pursue. Ministry of Environment around the EAO process. As you know, are currently dealing with two parallel applications, the same forest and wood fiber. Addressing that and making it a better process. And you spoke already about the RCMP with public safety. Another would be COVID adaptation funding, through the emergency management program, if anything is coming that way. So if I do, I want to suggest some stuff. I don't know that the industry will pursue them all, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Go ahead, Counsel Anderson.
I had a lengthy conversation with Jordan Sturdy, I don't know his name myself, but members of the chamber who were in the audience for his presentation earlier in the year. And he spoke about the Regional Economic Development Fund. Independently, it didn't need to be prompted, thought that we should be part of one. That's something we can think about. We have raised it in the past. But more, I wanted to emphasize something else that he has suggested is that we take better advantage of the estimate sessions. And we should. I agree with him completely. And following from earlier suggestions, Counsel Reese, and the list of issues that Lyndy Glende just highlighted, the estimates are another great opportunity, underutilized opportunity to take advantage of. So this is something that we could consider to coordinate with Darren Malley in any meeting we have with him. But he certainly advises it, and he passed on some really good illustrations of opportunities that could be taken advantage of at that session.
Great. And your audio was much better. Thank you, Counsel Anderson, whatever you did. Counsel Penangill.
Yeah, I think we're trying to achieve some sort of consensus here. So I'd just like to say I'm very interested in the ministers and some of the topics that Ms. Glende raised. And I think Minister Farnworth is another one that I think worthwhile to consider.
Okay, very good. My resolution is on tiny homes. And I had a brief conversation with Minister Robinson, Selena Robinson. She seems to think that everything that's needed to make tiny homes a reality is already there. So I don't think that there's any value in trying to have a conversation with her on that front. Because the resolution will speak for itself. Mayor Elliott, you are contemplating that. Do you have thoughts?
Well, it's interesting because the industry wouldn't be putting, asking us to put forward a motion if they had the ability to do what they needed to do. So even if the ability to do it is there, it hasn't been enacted yet somehow. So that's curious. But yeah, you know, we don't have to go to a minister for every resolution we put forward. We can see how it plays out on the floor, as Counsel Anderson says, and then follow up after that. I do think, what I'm curious about is whether we can request meetings with multiple ministers at one time, because they'll all be done by Zoom. And whether there's an opportunity to actually request simultaneous meetings, so with Minister Farnworth and Darcy at the same time, and on the BCR properties with MOTI, Empire, and JTT. So that would be interesting, to also advise the ministries that we're happy to share time and make better use of these ministers' time and do one pitch instead of three. So it'll be interesting to see if they're open to that as well. And I do support the motions around that Ms. Glende spoke to around municipal affairs and housing, the property assessed clean energy financing. I think if we're going to do the one-two environment around EAO, we should look at their new procedure documents that were designed under the Act and make specific suggestions for improvement around local government engagement that are within those guidance documents. They should all be published by now. So I think we have to be that specific if we're going to make that ask, especially since I sat on that committee. So I shouldn't probably criticize my own work unless I've got a good suggestion for how to improve it. So but I think that's a good idea. It's just that that's the homework that we need to do. And I think that more general, I think we're going to have to prioritize what we want out of MOTI because we've already got like three different topics here. BCR yards, road and highway, infrastructure and safety, and then the transit piece. So I think there's a broader UBCM transit push around TransLink and BCR transit. So I think we can leave that in UBCM's hands. So I'd rather focus our MOTI time on the highway and BCR properties.
Okay, thank you. Anything from anybody else? Is there any motion required for this? Or can we just move on?
I think we're, I think we have general consensus. So then we put the, what happens is staff prepare a brief ask paragraph. Is that right?
Yeah, I will try to ask a little bit of a very short summary of what we want to be about for all of us.
Okay, great. So we'll move on then to the next item, number seven, business arising from the minutes. That's the July 7, 2020 special business meeting minutes. And correspondence 0614 from C. French, full disclosure, that's my father, re-Sunday Afternoon Picnics by Mountain Bikers. And the motion was that the letter received from C. French, received June 14, 2020, regarding Sunday Afternoon Picnics by Mountain Bikers be included on the July 14, 2020 agenda for further consideration. Mayor Elliott?
I think if I recall correctly, this was coming to committee the whole so that we could hear from staff about some of the measures that have been taken or that we can take over the rest of the summer to support the residents up there. I've been communicating with some folks up there, and the things that I say we've put in place, they actually haven't seen. So I feel like I need to check in again with staff to make sure that I'm conveying the right information.
And my instinct says that Ms. Goldbeck is who we should go to first. Are you prepared to talk on this?
Not a video anymore. I moved rooms here. So our CMT seasonal policing has just started their full seasonal shift schedule about a week ago. So they are attending the area on the weekends. We do have bylaw normally scheduled to be attending there on weekends as well, but we've had some staffing challenges the last few weeks, which we are hopeful are being resolved imminently. So this is really, you know, in lieu of, you know, making significant structural changes or parking changes up there, attending and enforcing the restrictions that we already have is the tool that we have at our disposal. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we also have the Parks Ambassador Program that was a redeployment program, Council will recall, that have been attending trailheads and busy areas on the weekends. We have a little less capacity in that area now that summer camps and rec are running back up. So we don't have the staff available as we did about a month ago. But they are still, we are still able to fill some shifts on weekends, and that is their priority area.
Thank you. And Mr. Buckston, you popped up here. Do you want to share some thoughts as well? I'm not hearing anything. So I'll take that as a no. Counselor Rice?
Thank you. When I look at the pictures, and we've all been following the emails that we see from time to time, I don't know why we don't consider resident-only parking up there and enforce it and just get the message out really loud and clear, because none of these other things seem to work. We just have not had any success controlling this problem, and I can't imagine it's getting any better. It seems to be getting worse, if anything, judging by the correspondence we're getting. So first thing I saw when I saw all those pictures was, you know, if you had resident-only parking and you handed out tickets and started telling people if you had to, the message would get out really quickly. You with that?
Okay, very good. Mayor Elliott?
I always understood that we would just be moving the problem elsewhere and not really solving the problem. And so I think the solution is a conversation with our mountain biking community to figure out where we start to direct people so that we can have shuttles up to trailheads rather than parking at trailheads, or we develop other parking hubs for the community. But I think shuffling parking from one block to another isn't a solution. It's just moving the pain around the community. And we'll still get the same amount of letters, so.
Counselor Rice?
Well, I take the point, but in this particular instance, we do have that hub we set up. And I think it's obvious that people aren't using it like they should. And so that was my first choice, is to try to direct them to the hub and tell them they can't park in front of the people at the end of first. So there is an alternative without going into the neighborhood, which is not much farther away.
Counselor Herford?
Thank you. I think last week I pointed out the signage was lacking, and I think it's mentioned in the document we were provided to get people, direct people to that hub. And to the mayor's point, I tend to agree without a big shift in, like, this problem is so similar to what was happening at the smoke bus. And yes, there is the residence parking was implemented there, but at the same time, a huge smoke bus parking lot down low that was, that came online at the same time, and it's since been expanded that it took that capacity and allowed that residence-only parking to actually take hold and to be effective. So now, the climbing is a little bit more focused in our community than the mountain biking really is everywhere. And there are, this problem exists throughout the community on a smaller scale, and this seems to really be a hotspot. So, and I don't think that the hub, as much as it is underused, there's no one thing I don't think that's truly a silver bullet, because if that hub is used and we took everyone to the hub first and put them in that hub, the same folks that we've been working with on the safety school and around the Highlands Elementary are going to be seeing this exact same thing. The capacity in that hub is only a fraction of what the demand is. So as much as that will help, we need to direct people there. I don't think that putting that residence-only parking up there is going to fully eliminate it by pushing them to the hub. I think we're going to have issues with the residents around the hub. And I would, but to be clear, I would like to get to a point where we do have residence-only parking there, and these folks can enjoy their properties, and it can be a much smoother coexistence. But without something that's a big change, I don't know whether, the first place I could think they'd go is back down towards the hub, and then that whole zone around the school will be problematic. And this isn't just a weekend problem. It's not just a summer problem either. So when school's in session, you know, Monday to Friday, you know, excluding summertime, it's still a challenge. So we need something that, as much as that hub is great, it should take the load off, it could do a better job than it's doing. We need something that's more substantive solution, I think, before we'll have the actual desire to attack.
Counselor Penningill?
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of check in on what reasonable expectations are. There's been a couple of mentions of residence-only parking. And so from there, I would question, is that our expectation throughout the community? Or are there certain reasons why certain areas would enjoy residence-only parking? And, you know, I live close by, so I drive by, and I've seen the overflow, and especially during COVID, I understand why there's a lot of frustration. So I don't want to diminish that. But it seems that, you know, because there's been so much, such an extreme overuse of that area, the expectation has gone to zero activity there. And I'm not sure if that is a reasonable expectation. So just as a starting point, I'd like to get a better understanding of sort of that the community, what's their expectation about people coming in, visitors and using some degree of parking, what sort of behavior, what level of activity do we find acceptable?
Counselor Stoner?
Thank you, and thanks to staff for the report. I think it is helpful to see and hear what's been going on to date. With somebody else, but I don't think there's a silver bullet solution here. And to me, the parking is part of the issue, but I think the bigger issue is this behavior that we're seeing associated too. And so I'm just, one thing that I didn't see in the staff briefing was how much ongoing work or expectation we have of Sorka to continue to maintain communications of this regard through their channels and what responsibility they have in kind of elevating that standard of experience and expectation of those who are using the trailhead facilities.
I can, I mean, I can speak to that if people can hear me.
Yes, please do, Mr. Buckston.
Oh, good. I'm back again. I mean, we haven't had any direct communication with Sorka in the recent past, but we certainly can. I mean, the behavioral issue is something that we can do through media and marketing. And to a degree, there are some enforcement, so there are some enforcement issues. With respect to the hubs, we are going to try and improve, we are going to improve the signage that we've been sought, see if we can get that a little bit better and a little bit more visible to get people, more people to the hubs. But as I say, as we've noted in the memo, there isn't really an easy solution to this other than moving the problem somewhere else, which really isn't going to help us or council in terms of just removing parking or making it resident-only. The problem will then just move elsewhere in the community. So we can work on signage. We can work on some more enforcement. We can work on messaging for Sorka as well, to see if we can sort of lessen, take some of the edge off of this.
Great. Counselor Herford?
Thank you. One of the general concepts I see helping is sort of, is continuing to work on how, I guess, forests are accessible to mountain bike trail network is. And with the new trail at the bottom, Independence Road, as an example, the looking glass, there's places that are becoming more and more appealing to start and end the ride. And our efforts here are focused on the top of first, which is a hotspot. We have these other hubs that could use that signage as well to elevate their usage. So just maybe it's just by chance, but as I go past some of these other hub locations, which are great places to start and end a ride, they're underutilized. Whether, I think our branding of them as an adventure hub is great, but unless if, if you don't know what that is, you don't know what that is. You're just going, mountain biking needs parks. Whether it's tying some very obvious signage to these other hubs so that as these folks make their way around town, that they can really see that there is an opportunity, and they're encouraged, and they'll be celebrated for using these facilities that I think are in good spots. So I don't want our, the signage up there needs to improve for that hub. And I, but I think that throughout the marketing and the, in marketing, just the actual physical signage for these places could use a huge improvement, and I think will, I guess, will help. A silver bullet, no, but chipping away at it.
Okay, thank you. And I have a specific question, and I think maybe best directed to Mr. Buckston. The wooden sign posts that were recently installed in the two roundabouts on the Boulevard that have little tiny signs pointing folks to the adventure hub, is there a longer-term vision for those posts and some other signage that would be more appropriate to the size of those wooden posts?
I think the simple answer to that is yeah. We need to put some better signage on those. They're not, they're not working as they currently are. So I wouldn't disagree that we need to improve that signage. And at the intersections to get them off of first back to the, whatever that crossroad is, to get them back to the parking lot.
Okay.
That we can do. That is not, that is not an issue. We can do that.
Yes. Counselor Herford?
I'm curious what the role that parks can play in this, and I mean, BC parks with Alice Lake Provincial Park is a great place to start and end a ride, and they reach capacity in the summer. And I'm not one for using forested parklands and turning into a parking lot, but I wonder if there's some capacity somewhere there, whether that's widening shoulders to have some more spots or, and how that discussion happens. Because I really think that Alice Lake Park can really be a gateway to our, to our country as awareness, some of these other spots are seeing development pressure. I think that there's some work to be done there. And have conversations like that happened in the past, maybe not Ruby II or engaged that way at all? Because I know that people are parking at the top of first to access the provincial park.
We've had no discussions with expanding parking in, at Alice Lake, no.
What? I think there's a strong case, given that they're using, really, a lot of the access goes into the provincial park. They're using our neighborhoods to do it. I think there's a strong argument there for somehow to harness some capacity that must exist inside the park. And the parks are just by the nature, it should be designed to handle these recreational users. So I see that as a huge part of the solution, how to have that conversation and where those pieces are. I'm open to suggestions of where to go from here, but I think that's a key piece of it, particularly in this area.
Okay, so next step at this point would be to provide staff with a resolution. Mr. Buckston, based on what you've heard, do you have any thoughts on what a resolution could sound like?
I mean, I'm not sure that we need one. The big issue, the big issue is that we're going to need to put on to future council agendas and future budget discussions. In the interim, we'll get going on improved signage. The enforcement will ramp up when Natasha, when Ms. Goldbeck's crew is back to full capacity. So I'm not sure that any motion at this point would result in anything changing substantially in the very near future.
Okay, Mayor Elliott?
I was just going to move receipt of the memo and then suggest that, Counsel, we have conversations to have in the budget.
Okay. Counselor Stoner, that covers what you were?
Yeah, I was going to second that resolution receipt.
Okay, just before we formalize that, Counselor Herford?
Thank you. And I just had a quick question from Mr. Buckston. The signage around the other adventure hubs, is there existing budget or room, room, time in the work plan to, where opportunity presents itself to increase that signage as well? Does that work that can be done outside of the budgeting process where we're probably going to look after the rest, hopefully look after some more of it?
That's not beyond the realms of possibility. I'm also thinking that there might be options through online platforms such as Trailport to identify hubs and parking areas. So we'll look at some options there as well.
Yeah, I'd like to go on sort of a multi-pronged approach there to make sure that we are doing that online bit. But when you get there physically and you're excited to go riding your bike, that you're sort of grabbed by the scruff and dragged by our signage to the right spot. Okay, thank you.
That would be some pretty amazing signage if it could grab people by the scruff. So Mayor Elliott is moving that we receive, we take receipt of the staff memo, and that's seconded by Counselor Stoner. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you. And I think that takes us now to a break, right? So let's take through until 4:40. And then when we come back, we are using blue jeans for an enclosed session, right? Correct. So Counselor Stoner?
I'll move that we go into closing.
Sorry, say that again. You broke up.
I'll move that we go into closing.
Seconded by Counselor Herford. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.